He should be joining us.
Okay, looks like we have a quorum and our superintendent has joined us, so we'll get started. Good evening, I'm calling this meeting to order, the time is 5:33 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code Chapter 551, this meeting is officially open with a quorum present. The following board members are present virtually and I will now call on each of their names in order of their districts. I will still call on everyone just in case they join while we're doing roll call, District 2 trustee Toby Jackson.
Good evening, President Ramos, I'm here representing District 2.
Good to see you, District 3 trustee Quentin Phillips.
Good evening, President Ramos, here representing District 3.
All right, good to see you, sir, District 4 trustee Daphne Brookins.
Good evening, President Ramos, Daphne Brook is representing District 4.
Good to see you as well, District 5 trustee CJ Evans. I know she said she'd be a little late, so we'll greet her when she comes in, District 6 trustee Andar.
Good evening, President Ramos, this is Andar representing District 6.
To you as well trustee Andar, District 7 trustee Norman Robbins. Trustee Robbins, I don't think is going to be able to join us tonight, District 8 trustee Anaya Luevanos.
Good evening, President Ramos, Anaya Luevanos, representing District 8.
All right, good to see you, sir, District 9 trustee Ashley Paz.
District 9 trustee Ashley Paz, representing Northside, Southside, Eastside tonight proudly, happy to be here. Everybody smile.
I heard smile and then there was a blank with the muting, so I'm assuming that's a smile. Good to see you as well, and I am District 1 trustee Jacinto Ramos Jr., non-present. On March 16, 2020, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended certain open meetings requirements imposed by the Open Meetings Act. To slow the spread of COVID-19, this action permits meetings subject to the Open Meetings Act to be hosted by telephone or video conference. This meeting is being broadcasted live via Spectrum Charter Channel 192, Fort Worth ISD Live Channel on YouTube and a link provided in the agenda. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. We are meeting via by use of Zoom software application which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented times. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at toma@oag.texas.gov. You're on mute, Mr. Bond.
Sorry, let me try that again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Bond, at this time we will hear public comment, let me remind you that because of the restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage any verbal that has not been posted, we will listen and take notes. But the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with 1, a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, 2, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry, or direct a person to visit with staff about the issue. While the board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should refrain from mentioning names of individual employees or public officers during their comments. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. No presentation may exceed three minutes unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. I ask that you please observe these rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner. Because we are utilizing an online platform, all speakers will be announced to speak in the order in which they signed up. Mr. Clint Bond will announce the speaker's name and at that time his or her microphone will be unmuted for three minutes. Before making your comments, state your name and then proceed with your comment. At the end of three minutes, your microphone will be muted, Mr. Bond, would you please call on our first speaker?
Mr. Ramos, our first speaker for this evening is Sarah Peretta. If you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Sarah Peretta. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you all about my interest in serving on the Tarrant Appraisal Board of Directors. I'm interested in serving in this capacity as I have a strong belief in the importance of public schools, having been the product of an Arlington ISD education. Most importantly to me though, I have a son who will enter first grade at a Fort Worth ISD school in just a couple of weeks. I believe that I'm uniquely qualified to serve in this capacity as demonstrated by my strong financial acumen, my cross-functional collaboration skills with a focus on driving towards solutions, and my experience navigating complex financial situations. I've developed these skills over the course of my 16-year career in corporate finance and continue to hone these skills as the CFO of a business unit for a multinational corporation. Fort Worth ISD has such a diverse student population and furthering diversity and inclusion is something that is so important to me as a Latina. In the past, I've mentored fourth graders through the Fort Worth ISD Academy 4 program and most recently I've been involved in the diversity inclusion efforts within my company as a member of the North America Diversity and Inclusion Council. And of course, I try to bring a high degree of integrity to both my professional and volunteer endeavors. I realize that within our current financial climate, there will be challenges that amplify the need for TAD to have a stable system of accountability and governance in place for both taxing entities and taxpayers. I have experience as a CFO in driving this sort of accountability through streamlined processes and systems. If selected, I would want to ensure an open line of communication with the board to best represent Fort Worth ISD needs. In summary, I will bring a diverse background and strong financial experience set to the Tarrant Appraisal Board of Directors and thank you for your consideration. I'd also be happy to address any questions or feedback from the Fort Worth ISD board at this time, thank you all.
Thank you, our next speaker is Oninye Ajujo, if you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you, good evening, President Ramos, the board superintendent Scrivener. My name is Oninye Akujo and I would like to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to present myself this evening as a candidate for the TAD board. I'm interested in the TAD because I have nearly two decades of experience adopting and developing annual budgets. I have experience working on tax referendums that have passed, which have made funding opportunities for economic development for the city and authorities that I serve. I am a servant leader, highly experienced in finance, financial audits, procurement, and analysis which is required when dealing with the allocation of tax levying funds for major programs, salaries, and the district-wide initiatives. As a fiscal steward, in my leadership role, I have experience working with the board of directors, providing oversight, accountability, and serving on audit committees to ensure compliance. If appointed, my goal on behalf of the Fort Worth ISD is to efficiently serve as an effective member to ensure the production of an accurate, clear, and equitable appraisal role and policies that will serve with diversity and equity. I intend to ascertain transparency and accountability as required by you, the public, the district, and the children that the ISD serves. I will ensure my fellow TAD members are fair and I will work closely with the chief appraiser as it relates to the review of financial status reports for the Fort Worth ISD in comparison to the other taxing districts. I will be your fresh set of eyes and your steward for the district because it is for what our children, the teachers, and the community needs. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our third speaker this evening is Sal Espino, if you're ready, you may begin. Sal Espino?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you may begin, sir.
Okay, hi, my name is Sal Espino. First, I want to thank each and every one of you for your dedicated service on behalf of Fort Worth ISD schoolchildren and on behalf of public education. Secondly, I want to respectfully request that you consider continuing to keep the applicant pool open so that you may continue to review and recruit a wide array of diverse candidates. Ultimately, the objective here is to select the most qualified candidate to best represent Fort Worth ISD on the board of directors for the Tarrant Appraisal District. And third, I would like to tell you a little bit about me and also be considered for that position. My story is an immigrant story. I was born in Ciudad Juarez, Chihuahua, Mexico, where my mom from Durango met my dad. In 1972, my family migrated to the historic north side of Fort Worth and it was there that a young boy from humble and modest roots received and the doors of educational opportunity were open. I attended Circle Park Elementary, now Manuel Hada, JP Elder Middle School, and then the magnet program, the High School for Finance Profession at Polytechnic High School. I was blessed to graduate number one from Poly High School. I attended TCU on scholarships where I earned a bachelor's in business administration, majored in accounting with magna cum laude honors, and then attended the Dedman School of Law at SMU in University Park in Dallas. Over 20 years, my law practice has concentrated on commercial and residential real estate transactions and I've also represented clients before the appraisal review board. For 12 years, I was the elected council member from District 2 in North Fort Worth from 2005 to 2017 and I was mayor pro temp from 2014 to 2016. During all this time, I've been very proud of my Fort Worth ISD education, I've given back, serving on the Fort Worth ISD registering committee after the 2000 census and 2010 census. I've spoken at countless career days and gone to countless events at schools, not only in the north side of Fort Worth, but all throughout Fort Worth ISD. I was honored to be included in the Fort Worth ISD Wall of Fame and my diverse background in accounting, finance, real estate, law, public service, and community service makes me a candidate that would strongly represent the interests of Fort Worth ISD on the board of directors of Tarrant Appraisal District. Again, respectfully request, continue to keep the applicant pool open and select the best candidate to represent Fort Worth ISD. Thank you again for your time, your service, and your respectful consideration, muchas gracias.
Our next speaker is Erin Westbrook. Erin Westbrook, are you ready to address the board? Mr. Ramos was asked to call her name and she may be unable to speak, so I will read her comment. My name is Erin Westbrook and I want to address the start of in-person learning for the current school year. Although I wish to send my children, who are enrolled in pre-K and kindergarten, to school in person as soon as possible, I also fully support virtual options for all students and school staff. I would never ask another parent or school staff member to put themselves or their families at risk if they feel it is unsafe to return to school or work. However, I ask that you give parents and staff a choice. Please send another survey to both students and school staff to see who would choose in-person versus virtual learning. The numbers may be very different now that COVID-19 cases have been dropping. Schools have had time to purchase and implement additional safety equipment and measures and people have seen other districts and private schools in Fort Worth and surrounding areas successfully reopen. Then, I ask that you allow each campus to evaluate whether they are able to accommodate in-person learning. I don't think it is fair to shut down an entire district when there are schools with enough staff and safety measures to reopen. This is especially true for elementary students who cannot stay home alone if their parents work outside the home. Most younger elementary students are also unable to use a Chromebook and complete lessons on their own without supervision. My husband and I work both, both work full-time, so our current plan is to complete schoolwork in the evenings and over the weekend. I'm extremely anxious about how this is going to get done without completely burning out my children and family. Many students, including my own, are in daycare right now where they are exposed to more people than they would be if in an elementary school classroom. Other students are forming learning pods, attending camps, playing on sports teams, and even working out with their high school teams, so they are not quarantined either. As a result, keeping school virtual is not serving its purpose of quarantining students. In summary, please reopen schools in person with a virtual option after the initial four weeks of virtual-only instruction. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ed Austin, you may begin, sir.
Good evening to the board members, president, superintendent. My piece is the virus, the second wave. The coronavirus, better known as COVID-19, first arrived in February, early March, and has killed 150,000 people. Three to four million people affected worldwide. The virus has been found in animals and pets, in other words, it's like a Frankenstein monster that's out of control, a super cold. The second wave is expected to hit in November. The coronavirus is a microorganism that can cause disease. This virus also a contagion, meaning it can be passed from person to person. Genetic analysis, the second wave of COVID-19 is a virus known as the cytokine storm. The virus can affect your immune system. Your immune system will become compromised and begin attacking other vital organs as it's trying to fight out the virus itself. This is known as autoimmune response. I ask everyone to take this virus seriously, teachers across the country, at home. The timeframe for the onset system can be two weeks. Children who are asymptomatic, children who present no symptoms can be carriers. Children who are asymptomatic can pass along the virus from student to teacher, the buzz drives a very faculty and staff. And for grown folks who are not listening to medical science, which I watch numerous medical scientists have classmates and medical doctors and y'all put our kids in jeopardy along with the staff members behind some money. I won't tolerate, especially in District 3 and 4. So the fight is on, I would not tolerate this district to allow these kids because on your paperwork you said you will provide a clean and safe environment when you know what's out there. And so our kids that's in 3 and 4 are being raised by grandparents and have preconditioning, preconditions that can infect their loved ones. So if y'all that senseless and that reckless about this virus that you can't tell from the flu or cold when we go into this flu season, if one child is sick, is on y'all hands and we will see you in federal court behind this, I promise you, the community will stand by me, I promise you, the fight is on, especially the ones that's off in 3 and 4. And y'all know better, y'all know better, we have too many problems, we don't have enough medical assistance in our community and we will not tolerate this and I will fight this to the end, you have a good evening.
Our next speaker was Laura Overton, who asked that the following statement be read. I urge you to promote allowing speech-language pathologists to work from home in order to better serve their students. Texas law is clear concerning the quality of telehealth services. The addition of PPE will cause a reduction in quality that may cause sessions to be nullified, therefore causing FWISD to have a discrepancy between services required by ARD committee and services delivered. I will ethically be unable to bill for these sessions, causing a loss in revenue for FWISD. The law mentioned is Section 111.212. Requirements for the use of telehealth by speech-language pathologists. Subparagraph C, the scope, nature, and quality of services provided via telehealth are the same as that provided during in-person sessions by the provider. The next speaker will be Molly Hiri, if you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I was surprised to see the vote for the TAD appointee on the agenda for tonight. It was stated at the special meeting on August 10th that there would be a transparent process for accepting applications. So I guess my question is, how and where was this advertised to the community? I expected there to be a very aggressive publicly, you know, announced campaign and it's disappointing to see that our board's actions aren't matching their words. I would encourage you to extend the application process and make sure that all parts of the process, from the timeline to the application and appointment date, are shared publicly and most importantly, that the application is easily found on the Fort Worth ISD website, thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle, who asked that her last name not be announced and she has asked that the following statement be read. On Thursday, 8/20, speech-language pathologists, audiologists, occupational, physical, and music therapists in FWISD were informed that they were essential and required to be on campus starting Monday, 8/24. I'm an SLP, so I'm writing perspective. I have been performing all my job duties from home since COVID-19 hit our community. My governing board, TDLR, approves teletherapy as an approved practice in the state of Texas. I have been preparing all summer for virtual learning and working from home. I have worked in FWISD for six years and I have a child who is a student and will also be learning at home. Experienced teachers in FWISD are allowed the option to work from home or campus. I am asking for the same option for SLPs as I believe that the quality of our services will be compromised if required to work from a campus. If we work from a campus, we are required to wear masks. Masks impede the quality of our services as it reduces our intelligibility and covers up our facial expressions, which is an important part of therapy for our students with autism. If we believe the quality of our services has been diminished, we are not ethically able to bill Medicare, Medicaid for our services. Last spring, during the early stages of COVID-19, our department was able to bill the same amount as the previous year, indicating that we were just as productive at providing services during the very I am urging you to tell the assistant I am urging you to tell the Assistant Superintendent of Specialized Academic Support that speech therapy services can and should be performed either on campus or at home in order to keep everyone safe, but also in order to ensure high-quality services for our FWISD students. Thank you, Dr. Scribner and board members, for all you do for our students. Our next speaker this evening is Christina Sellers. You may begin if you're ready.
Hi, my name is Christina Sellers and I am also a speech-language pathologist for Fort Worth ISD. I want to let you know that over 275 special education staff, including over 100 speech-language pathologists, found out on the 19th and 20th that they would be moving from remote work to working from a building beginning on August 24th. I personally have lost a 49-year-old family member to COVID-19 and I have a 30-year-old family member who survived a mild but prolonged bout with COVID-19 and has lung damage showing up on her chest X-rays right now. I have five members of my immediate family who are at high risk of death from COVID that I cannot reduce my contact with. I don't play with this virus and I have not been so much inside, I have not been inside so much as a grocery store since March. We have tried to reach out through the proper channels and have been assured that it is safe to return to a building. And more troubling, we have concerns that have not been addressed by our leadership. They have responded that our work is valued and that we are, we are essential employees, but they haven't actually responded to our specific concerns. I want to tell you that I do not feel safe inside my building. There were seven people at my building today with no masks, masks down below their noses or chins, or wearing face shields instead of masks. I'm sure we'll be able to remedy those problems by making sure everyone knows they must have their PPE on when they're inside a building. And with that, I want to let you know that teletherapy is going to be very difficult to do while wearing PPE. While we have a mask on and a face shield, we're going to have reduced visual cues. Students are not going to be able to understand us. Masks attenuate sound by three to 12 decibels and also result in low-pass filtering of high-frequency sounds, making it more difficult to understand speech and some higher-pitched voices. We're going to have a reduced ability to provide visual cues. When we're doing speech therapy, we often say, "Open your mouth like this. Make your tongue do what I'm doing right now." And we're not going to be able to do that behind PPE over a screen. This is going to reduce our ability to bill Medicaid, as has been mentioned. And it's also going to be unethical. And for, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do anything that's unethical and I'm definitely going to prioritize the health and safety of my family. So I want you to know that there are speech-language pathologists like me who are willing to leave the district if things stand as they currently are. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next public comment is a statement that Susan Tilly asked that be read. Hello, my name is Susan Tilly. I am the grandparent of a student who is in first grade at West Creek Elementary. He is autistic. During our virtual learning, starting soon, most teachers are working from home, so no masks needed. However, Laura Overton, our speech therapist, is required to work from school, requiring a mask and shield. Please consider allowing her to work from home, eliminating a mask and shield. My grandson will not do well if he cannot see her face. He would not focus. Ms. Laura has gone above and beyond for him. Please make his virtual learning a positive experience. Thank you for your consideration. And our last speaker this evening is Avia Correa. You may begin. Avia Correa? Avia Correa? Mr. Ramos, that concludes our speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Bond, and thank you all for sharing your thoughts this evening. We will move on to presentation, so I will turn it over to Dr. Scribner for a presentation from he and his team.
Thank you very much, President Ramos, members of the board and our Fort Worth ISD school community, both our internal community and our external community. As you heard, we are in a very difficult time. Every family, each individual is debating kind of their steps moving forward. And we, as a system, are striving to make the best decisions in the interest of all students. Overwhelmingly, we believe that the Fort Worth ISD school community, again, both our internal and external community, wants to get students back to school. We want to do that virtually on the first day of school, but certainly as soon as possible in person when that is deemed safe for in-person instruction. We want a sense of normalcy for students, for teachers, for principals, for parents, for support staff, administrators, for our board members and other community leaders. So, so here we sit, two weeks prior to the first day of school. I was asked earlier today about student enrollment. How many students are actually signed up to return? And as we make the comparison, two weeks prior to the first day in 2019 and two weeks prior to the first day in 2020, I can say that students want to come back because our numbers, in fact, are up. We had about 59,000 students enrolled online exactly two weeks prior to the first day of school last year. And today, we have 71,000 students enrolled online. So we're up 12,000 students. Just a bit of anecdotal data, our early college high school students have already begun their schedules. As you know, those campuses, TCC South, Marine Creek, and the Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences are all located on Tarrant County College campuses and therefore follow the TCC college calendar. We had 100%, yesterday was the first day of school, 100% enrollment and 100% attendance. So we were very, very pleased by that. The goal, as I said, is to guide us through these first few weeks and return safely to Our goal right now is that October 5th date to open schools, but we also want to open them at a time when we can keep them open. We're encouraged. Recent COVID data indicates that positivity rates, cases per week, hospitalizations, and other metrics are heading in the right direction. They're not where we want them to be. But I want you to know that in addition to two meetings a week that I and other superintendents hold with our Tarrant County Public Health officials, we are going to have a smaller group meeting of just superintendents so that the public county health officials can outline the specific combination of metrics that would compel them, recommend a return to school. And when we return to school, we certainly want to offer what has been pointed out in the public comments section, choice. I believe that the values of public education are around equity, excellence, efficiency, and choice. If we can go to the next slide. So we know what our mission is, preparing all students for success in college career and community leadership. And this board has led not only the state of Texas, but the nation in their commitment to equity, prioritizing in this case the health and safety of students and employees, but also providing choice for flexibility, equitable access to learning, and ensuring high-quality educational experiences. The commitment to equity, you'll hear about a little bit later in the presentation today, this evening rather, will touch upon not only our racial equity work, but also our resource investment through the school performance framework. We have schools on different tiers of performance and those who are performing at higher levels have earned some autonomy. So that will allow us to redirect, redirect resources from those campuses and those pyramids to those areas of town and those zip codes that have historically performed at more challenging levels. Next slide, please. So we talked about what we're moving forward with, and that is, in these changing times, we need to adapt. We've already had to adapt not only to public health conditions and changing guidance from our state agencies, but also responding with different structures and flexibility, complying with TEA guidelines. And we know that by October, they likely will also change, balancing between district-wide structures and allowing flexibility. For example, in the spring, when we all pivoted over spring break and in two weeks went from an in-person system to a to a stay-at-home order that was, that was put upon us by local and state officials. Our district-wide instructional plans were centrally, they came from the district. And there was not much latitude. Now, with the work that we've done in the spring and summer, those guidelines from the district will be just that, a framework. There will be guidelines within which classroom teachers can use their professional judgment to modify instruction, to help students need additional support, to accelerate those students who are ahead as they see fit. Next slide, please. So, school districts nationwide, as I said, were kind of on their heels in the spring. Today, we're pushing forward, our Fort Worth ISD Forward Return to Learning Plan. Again, returning first virtually, but ultimately as quickly as possible, as safely as possible in person. We need to think, plan, and move forward. Next slide. Who would have thought that the boundary process, where we had almost 20 boundary forums and many more smaller follow-up meetings, our attendance boundary worked last year, who would have thought that that would be just a footnote in the 2019-2020 school year? Remember, we had not aligned our attendance boundaries in 20 years. We spent a lot of time doing that in the fall into the new year and then COVID hit us. Remember why we aligned our feeder patterns? We wanted continuity for educational and student support programs. We're a large district of 209 square miles. We want to build community embedded into this large metropolitan area that is Fort Worth. School spirit from the high school to the middle schools to the elementary schools. And also, it creates a proactive way to anticipate needs. When there is a crisis in the home, it doesn't only affect the elementary student, but it also affects the middle school or high school sibling. And so we want to have that aligned communication. We understand how important, how impactful this work is, not only to close equity gaps, as we see them now even more prevalent in these unprecedented times. It simply allows for a more student-centered structure and support. Next slide. These student-centered focus decisions also led us to reorganize our central office in a student-centered support structure where there is no longer a fragmented responsibility, but rather a cohesive unit to support students and to support schools. This is what we will see virtually initially, but once we get back to in-person instruction, we are really excited about the positive impact that this change will render. Really, it's one point of contact and one point of accountability. As you see in the before picture, we had a chief of elementary and a chief of secondary, reworking that now to two chiefs on student and school support. Each one of them supervising a handful of executive directors responsible for instruction through the pre-K 12 pyramid, vertical alignment with school principals and school pyramids, all working in unison from the elementary to middle school and high school level. Next slide. The same holds true for academics. Looking forward to our 2020-2021 school year, you will also see multi-layered support that is also a function of one point of contact versus elementary and secondary responsibility. Also, the school performance framework, we are going to be shifting resources toward those zip codes, towards those pyramids that have the Tier Four and Five schools that have been struggling historically. We know, we know what works, as you saw in our Leadership Academy. When we bring our most effective teachers to serve our students in the greatest need, so high-quality instruction, more time on task, expanding the school day, and after-school support and not only academic support, but also exposure to fine arts, to enrichment, to athletics. All of that makes for a well-rounded student. And we want to do that not only in terms of our social and emotional support, but also in our academic support. Next, next slide, please. So moving forward, in this unique year where we will have both virtual and in-person, we focused a great deal on professional development. Our educational tech team, online platform, focused in the spring while we were on shelter-at-home and beyond. We worked with 100, excuse me, 1,300 teachers, awarding over 6,800 credit hour. This summer, by the end of the summer, when, when school starts in just two weeks, we will have served more than 5,000 teachers with professional development on our new online platform. Next slide. Communication. We all have communicated regularly with our stakeholders during these historic, unprecedented, and difficult times. Each, each member of, each Board of Trustee, myself, our entire staff. This is a very, very difficult time, but communication is key as, as we solve problems with the two-way flow of information. We've dedicated our webpage for COVID-19, "Learning at Home." These are efforts that need to continue, and we also have to look at this from non-traditional avenues. Not only district websites, but also through internal email, digital newsletters, social media platforms, and the like. Next slide. The plan forward with regard to stakeholder engagement began early this summer. With our Equity and Excellence Team and a community conversation, the board held three separate trustee-sponsored town halls. And just recently, last week, we had our Let's Talk Live virtual instruction with teaching faculty and staff and multiple focus group engagement opportunities beyond that, not only Fort Worth ISD-sponsored, but with many of our partners and nonprofits. Community Frontline is one. I've spoken to several of our faith leaders as well as we move forward and communicate our plans for both effective virtual and ultimately safe and effective in-person instruction. Next slide. So what is the plan forward? You'll remember this from a, from a board meeting that we held many weeks ago, where we shared with you the decision to change the start date to September the 8th. That starts the TEA clock. The board, through the TEA guidelines, we've decided for four weeks, unless the COVID metrics improve dramatically, our plan is to bring back students in a safe manner on October the 5th. We will be monitoring that in the weeks to come and be making presentations to our community as soon as school starts so that we all are headed in the same direction. At the end of the four weeks on October the 5th, one of two things can happen. Depending on the circumstances on the ground, we could extend virtual for another four weeks with a phase-in plan or offer the virtual and in-person choice, though available to all students. Again, we're encouraged by the most recent COVID numbers. We hope that that decline in cases and those other metrics are sustained and continue to go lower. Our goal again is to bring students back on October the 5th. In fact, this week, we will be surveying again. I know one of our speakers asked for another survey. That's already in the works. We want to get the most current and most accurate feedback from our parents and community. So we will be asking our parents about their decision. Should the COVID numbers continue to go in the right direction? And we were to return on October the 5th, what percentage, how many of our students would be returning in person? And how many would want to return online? Next slide. As many of you know, as part of our most recent reorganization, we established the new position of Executive Director of Parent Partnership. Remember, we're transitioning away from parent engagement to parent partnership. We can learn as much from our parents in every corner of the city as they can learn from us. We want our new Executive Director not to be a central office employee, but rather serve at the campus level, working with all of our principals to improve parental partnership. And as you know, the individual in that position was a very successful principal, particularly in the area of parent partner. We're committed to engaging our parents as partners in education, not only to improve student outcomes, but to support our equity work. How? By communicating using, as I student outcomes, but to support our equity work. How? By communicating using, as I said, a variety of platforms, not only the the website, but social media, virtual town halls will continue, campus drive-throughs, our front porch visits, and many of those included a social worker to to communicate with families, a gathering stakeholder input via surveys. You'll be expecting, please expect another survey here shortly. Town halls, public comment, Let's Talk app, deliberate deliberately providing multilingual and interpretation services for all events and communications, and we will continue with our videos to help parents prepare for students in their online work. Next. So what would virtual learning look like? I indicated earlier that as we pivoted, like every district in in Texas and across the nation, last spring, for a district-wide effort, we will provide more of a framework. Teachers not only will be engaged for the four hours, three hours at the at the pre-K level, but K through 12 for four hours of direct instruction every day and engagement. In addition to that, our teachers will have planned availability for students, including office hours for one-on-one connection, but also for small group work. So what will be different in this virtual 2.0 in Fort Worth? Well, we know that in some cases last spring, participation was not as regular as we would have liked, and the state guidelines provided for a pass-fail system. That no longer is the case. Academic work will be graded. It'll be graded in an A through F system. The new platform we will be using is Google Classroom, K-12. Students and teachers are familiar with that. CSaw will be the platform for preschool, excuse me, if you have a pre-K, rather. Our TEA guidelines, as I said, four hours of engagement, direct instruction for K-12, three for the pre-K students, providing sample lessons for students, kind of a baseline from which they can enhance the lesson lesson. Or if if students want a model lesson, we'll also be providing model lessons by an expert teacher that will be play that model lesson and then follow it up with direct instruction, checking for understanding and and following their own lesson plan. We've modified our scope and sequence. Scope and sequence means what we are teaching and when we are teaching it. We've modified it to match with our four hours of engagement and direct instruction. In some cases, teachers will be able to work on foundational skills and others, they'll be able to accelerate instruction. Next slide. Please. Moving forward, again, our special education students are always a focus. The specialized academic support services. In fact, I know that tomorrow night we'll have another town hall. Our Chief Academic Officer, Jerry Moore, will be hosting the Special Ed PPA Town Hall tomorrow evening. Want to continue to have a good dialogue and learn from our special education parents so we can make sure that they their students have access to free and appropriate public education. To the greatest extent possible, virtually, we will be we will be honoring the Individualized Educational Program, the IEP, and especially for students whose IEPs cannot be met in a virtual setting, we will be arranging for in-person services during the first four weeks in person on campus. So want to make sure that that they cover that tomorrow night in the virtual town hall. Next slide. Again, focusing in two areas, academic support, health, safety, and social and emotional learning. The realignment of our pyramids is going to allow for us to take to to serve each campus in each pyramid with one point of contact, one point of accountability. Next. And then moving forward, not only supporting our students, but supporting every member of the the school community, instructional support for teachers, additional assistance for students, providing technology, support for parents. We know that we need to expand the help desk and also provide one-on-one opportunities for parents who are struggling with with technology and their understanding of technology. Also, resources for teachers, students, and parents. The support will be available on the first day of school. It'll be available in person. It'll be available on campus, and it will begin on September the 8th. Meal distribution. We are expanding our meal distribution from 18 sites to every neighborhood school across the city. It allows us to address not only, it allows us really a window into into our into our students and families to help address social and emotional needs, should that emerge in that interaction, but also provide a touch point for parents who have technology needs as they arrive. So the plan that our team has put together, we believe, is forward-thinking, focusing on feeder alignment, reorganization, teacher training, forward planning with communication, stakeholder engagement, decision-making, and moving forward with funding, parent partnership, virtual learning, support for schools. And at this time, our team would be happy to entertain any questions, comments, or suggestions the board may have.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Scribner. Any questions from the board? You can either just go ahead and chime in or use a little blue hand from the board.
President Ramos.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, but my little blue hand is not appearing.
Okay.
I think that because this is a webinar format, maybe, I don't know. But anyway, may I ask some questions?
Absolutely. Please do.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Scribner, for that very thorough presentation. I was reminded of the, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have in front of me, of the American Academy of Pediatrics, who recommended that we listen to our health professionals, but we also allow our educational professionals to put the plan in place. And that is something that you and your team, I know, have worked hard on. Opening up schools and allowing in-person instruction is an extremely complicated, intricate, and very, it must be a very deliberate process. And so I appreciate all the time that you have put into that. I am very excited to hear the student enrollment numbers that are up, and I know that too is not by accident, that there have been many people who have been working tirelessly and finding very creative ways to reach families going door-to-door. I think there was one team of staff members that sat in front of grocery stores in order to catch people on their way in to the grocery store. They're really thinking outside the box, and this is one of those times that we need that. And so I appreciate all the effort that has gone into making sure these students are enrolled. I don't want somebody to think that effort goes unnoticed because it's it's significant and it's important. I'm also thankful for the reorganization that has been put in place. It makes so much more sense to me. And it 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 just, it's nice to know that if I need to reach an executive director, that I can figure out which one it is because I know which pyramid they are directing. And so I appreciate that. And thank you for the thorough information regarding services for students who have additional needs, whether they are economic needs, or food needs, or social, emotional needs. Some of our students have needs that are great, and I'm glad that we are continuing to meet those needs. With the the new COVID numbers that we're receiving, hooray for Tarrant County. So we're going in the right direction. I think we finally figured out as a community that the responsibility to get kids in schools does not just rely on the school district. It is a community effort, and we all have to do our part to make sure that we are creating and fostering an environment that will allow our kids to get back in schools because I know that is where students learn best, and I know that you will agree with that statement. If you to decline, I also recognize that just because the numbers have have landed where we would like to see them, that we can't just slip a switch and open up schools because it's a very complicated process. And you pretty, you outlined a lot of that process. If the numbers continue to decline, is there a chance, and this may require board approval of which I am only one member of, is there a chance to possibly allow some students to return to in-person learning before October 5th that are in really key or transition years, such as like pre-K through 2?
Well, thank you for the question, Trustee Dar. Yes, we're open to anything. Again, the the conversation around flexibility within a structure, I think, is key. I agree that masks seem to be working. I was driving into work this morning, and I heard a heard a an advertisement that said, public, public service advertisement said, wear your mask, COVID stops with me. That each one of us have a have a have a ability to to affect affect change. But but absolutely, we're going to be watching those very closely, as I said. I, along with the Superintendent of Arlington ISD, we're the largest district in Tarrant County, we have asked for a meeting with public health officials, again, to outline the specific combination of metrics and levels that would that would compel them to recommend that we return. And obviously, those decisions are school official decisions. It would be a recommendation from me to the board to be considered and perhaps voted on. We would want to do that in a logistically well-thought-out way, so that, like you said, we wouldn't start school, decide to start school one afternoon and start it the next morning. We'd want to make sure we were, we were, we were planning this out well. But 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 I think really nothing is off the table. We really needed to take a look at this. Again, understanding, though, that that choice is going to be something that we would, we, one of the values, as I said, equity, excellence, efficiency, and choice, that we would want to honor. Should should it be deemed that the public health officials are recommending a return to in-school instruction, we still would want to provide that choice for those families who would who would prefer to have their students remain at home. But but to answer your question, yes, we are watching this very closely and will and and would be moving forward in a thoughtful way.
Do you have a date yet for the meeting with the Health Department, or are you waiting to hear back from them?
We are working on scheduling right now. I hope, I hope that it can be done this week. So we have tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday to get that scheduled. And and the three or four of us would really dive into those 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 numbers. In fact, they have looked, they have developed the dashboard that many of us see on their website, and they want to have a even more specific dashboard focused on on school-age students and also, if at all possible, regionally, because we know that the that the virus is hitting different sectors of our, so we're 209 square miles, different sectors of our city in different ways.
That is very true. The another question. I, the survey, one of the key pieces to this is most definitely going to be staff and and teachers and and who is willing to be in the building and wants to be in the building. And I know that there are teachers out there that are dying and desperate to go back. And I know that there are other educators and staff members and professionals that who, we heard from one earlier this evening, who have medically compromised people in their home, or who have who are medically compromised themselves. I would think that getting a survey out to staff sooner rather than later would be a key piece to this equation, even before asking parents, because the district needs to know what we have to work with, who, who, and I, and there, and it's a, it's a complicated process. But that to get that information from staff as soon as possible so that the district knows exactly where we stand in that front and what what the issues are that are going to need to be addressed or not addressed or whatever. So I would love to see that out sooner rather than later.
We, we, we agree with you and will move forward accordingly.
And that's all I have. I do appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I'm not exactly sure when most of you or your team slept over the summer. It's a very complicated process. I heard a news reporter the other day, not too long ago, say that Fort Worth ISD needs to begin to put preparations in place. And I'm like, dude, uh-uh, they've been working on this for a long time. We are not beginning to get this in order. This has been a process and not just one plan, but many plans because things are changing so consistently. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Dar. I don't see any anyone that may have raised their hand or any trustees, if you'd like to just jump in. Questions or comments? Okay. Looks like we don't have any questions or comments. For you, Dr. Scribner and the team. We'll now move on to consent agenda items. As Board President, I am making the following statement in accordance with Board Policy BBFA Local. This is a reminder to all Board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have for matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, Board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Please note that Consent Agenda Item B14, which is approved purchase of an online beginning and intermediate college algebra course for high school students, has been pulled and will not be addressed tonight. So we're going to, I'm going to call on each trustee, see if you have any questions or comments concerning an agenda item. We'll begin with District Two Trustee Toby Jackson. Do you have any questions or comments on consent agenda?
I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. District Three Trustee Quinn Phillips.
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Ramos. When it comes to the consent agenda this evening, we, there's two items, particular one with Ben Brook, one with Forest Hill as far as renewed contracts with policing. We're at the point now to where I know that we're going to need to get these contracts in place in order to be able to be successful for our school year that we have, that we're now beginning. My, my comment is, and I guess my request, is that we utilize this year that we now have, because it's a yearly contract, that we utilize this year to actually actually be able to, you know, speak with faculty, staff, and students, as was the community about about the role that our policing are playing in our school, but we can actually have a substantial body that we are able to look at when it comes to how we're making this decision, how we're making these decisions moving forward. For the most part, before now, it's been pretty easy to rubber stamp and kind of just continue to roll on what we have going. But 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 now with a heightened sense of awareness of what of what these roles look like, I think it will behoove us, and no matter what our decision-making is moving forward, that we have substantial base as far as why we're selecting how we're moving. So I guess just putting that into the atmosphere to Dr. Scribner, to staff members, if we could take a great look at that, look, great look at that throughout this year, and make sure that we're involved in the community heavily on what on what their opinions and experiences are with police, with police officers within our school. Thank you, President Ramos.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Thank you. Moving on to District Four Trustee Daphne Brookens. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I know that we had spoken about all of the Board members going through the the COVID training. I wanted to make sure that with the renewal of those contracts with the police, that we, I know we, we said that before, that they were going to go through the same training that we were. I just wanted to make sure that we are sticking to that.
Karen, I saw you nodding your head. Is that a yes?
Ms. Brookens, thank you. We will ensure that's happening. We did include in the contract our training for our racial equity work. So that is in the contract that you'll see in the background and the backup. But we will definitely work with Ben Brook as well as Forest Hill about our COVID training and then Fort Worth as well. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, though.
Thank you, Trustee Brookens. District Five Trustee CJ Evans, any questions or comments?
Yes, two things. First, on B2 with Conmi Madre, I know it looks like we're just in three schools now, three middle schools. I would love to see that broadened and extended where possible, where it can grow organically. And then B6, how many years have we, is, has this been happening? I saw some of the data, but how many years has this been in place?
I don't have the answer for how many years, Ms. Evans, but I know we have been doing it. And the increase in the numbers we see also is with our, this is our key with our partnership with T3, but I can certainly get you that data.
Okay. And then how many counselors is it employing?
It's, it's a mix because we have one at the the comprehensive high school that we're paying for. And then with T3, they're all paying for. And then with T three, they're also for the six schools that we're doing T three at. It's it's six more per school that's there. So it depends on the school and which was a part of the T three pilot. So in total, you know, we were looking at right now 13 that we're that we're covering because we're paying for one, and then the ones that that T three is paying for at these expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, District Six trustee Andar, any questions or comments on consent agenda?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, District Norm trustee Robbins wasn't able to join us today. District Day trustee Ana Luvenos, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. District Nine trustee Ashley Paz.
I have no questions, but I would just like to support the perspectives that were presented by both trustee Phillips and Brookins.
Okay, thank you. And I won't have any questions or comments either myself. We will now we are now going to recess and reconvene and close meeting for executive session. The time is 6:36 PM. The date is Tuesday, August 25, 2020. We will now recess and reconvene virtually for executive session as authorized by chapter 551 of the Texas government code under sections 551.071, 1072, 1074, and 1076.
Before you start the new school year and online learning, create your space.
All right gentlemen, this is gonna be a space for our online learning.
Find a home learning environment that's comfortable and it's free from distractions as possible.
You know which class is working till lunch.
Working there repeatedly establishes a routine and keeps books, supplies, everything you need in one place. The space must also have high-speed internet access and a power source, a digital device, and in shared spaces, headphones are strongly recommended. Now be sure to contact your campus if you need a Chromebook or a hotspot.
Okay, turn it on. 10:30 we're gonna start working on math.
Just like in the classroom, students need a daily routine. The closer you can stick to a regular school schedule, the easier it will be for everyone. But find a schedule that works for the student and the needs of the family. Try to schedule virtual learning sessions when you're not likely to be distracted. Use a calendar for due dates and class meetings. Color coding can help. Set alarms and alerts on your phone as needed, and you're in a good place to learn.
Good job today guys. You got some free time.
For more information, go to fwisd.org/families. This is going to be your school area. You've created your home learning space. Now let's get you started online. First, know that kindergarten through 12th grade students will use the Google Classroom Virtual Learning Platform. Pre-K students will use Seesaw. Google Chrome is the recommended web browser. Google Meet is the communication tool teachers will use to video conference with students. Teachers will communicate with parents through district email and Parent Link. And every teacher will maintain a class Google site that you can access from your campus's website. No matter what kind of device you use, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, practice with it before the first day of school. Now actual learning begins by signing on to ClassLink. It's the portal to your virtual learning platform and many digital tools and resources you will use. To get to ClassLink, just go to fwisd.org-myfwisd. Click the "Sign In With Microsoft" button. Type in your district Active Directory username. That's the one with the letter S and your student ID number, followed by @stu.fwisd.org. By the way, you may occasionally need your Google username, which is similar. Instead of typing "stu" in the extension, spell out "students". Note that your password is the same for your Active Directory and Google accounts. And you're on your way to online learning. The ClassLink Launchpad links you to important applications, websites, and cloud storage.
Good job today guys.
For more information, including step-by-step video guides, go to fwisd.org/families. Before you start the new school year and online learning, create your space.
All right gentlemen, this is gonna be a space for our online learning.
Find a home learning environment that's comfortable and it's free from distractions as possible.
You know which class is working till lunch.
Working there repeatedly establishes a routine and keeps books, supplies, everything you need in one place. The space must also have high-speed internet access and a power source, a digital device, and in shared spaces, headphones are strongly recommended. Now be sure to contact your campus if you need a Chromebook or a hotspot.
Okay, turn it on. 10:30 we're gonna start working on math.
Just like in the classroom, students need a daily routine. The closer you can stick to a regular school schedule, the easier it will be for everyone. But find a schedule that works for the student and the needs of the family. Try to schedule virtual learning sessions when you're not likely to be distracted. Use a calendar for due dates and class meetings. Color coding can help. Set alarms and alerts on your phone as needed, and you're in a good place to learn.
Good job today guys. You got some free time.
For more information, go to fwisd.org/families. Before you start the new school year and online learning, create your space.
All right gentlemen, this is gonna be a space for our online learning.
Find a home learning environment that's comfortable and it's free from distractions as possible.
You know which class is working till lunch.
Working there repeatedly establishes a routine and keeps books, supplies, everything you need in one place. The space must also have high-speed internet access and a power source, a digital device, and in shared spaces, headphones are strongly recommended. Now be sure to contact your campus if you need a Chromebook or a hotspot.
Okay, turn it on. 10:30 we're gonna start working on math.
Just like in the classroom, students need a daily routine. The closer you can stick to a regular school schedule, the easier it will be for everyone. But find a schedule that works for the student and the needs of the family. Try to schedule virtual learning sessions when you're not likely to be distracted. Use a calendar for due dates and class meetings. Color coding can help. Set alarms and alerts on your phone as needed, and you're in a good place to learn.
Good job today guys. You got some free time.
For more information, go to fwisd.org/families. This is going to be your school area. You've created your home learning space. Now let's get you started online. First, know that kindergarten through 12th grade students will use the Google Classroom Virtual Learning Platform. Pre-K students will use Seesaw. Google Chrome is the recommended web browser. Google Meet is the communication tool teachers will use to video conference with students. Teachers will communicate with parents through district email and Parent Link. And every teacher will maintain a class Google site that you can access from your campus's website. No matter what kind of device you use, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, practice with it before the first day of school. Now actual learning begins by signing on to ClassLink. It's the portal to your virtual learning platform and many digital tools and resources you will use. To get to ClassLink, just go to fwisd.org-myfwisd. Click the "Sign In With Microsoft" button. Type in your district Active Directory username. That's the one with the letter S and your student ID number, followed by @stu.fwisd.org. By the way, you may occasionally need your Google username, which is similar. Instead of typing "stu" in the extension, spell out "students". Note that your password is the same for your Active Directory and Google accounts. And you're on your way to online learning. The ClassLink Launchpad links you to important applications, websites, and cloud storage.
Good job today guys.
For more information, including step-by-step video guides, go to fwisd.org/families. This is going to be your school area. You've created your home learning space. Now let's get you started online. First, know that kindergarten through 12th grade students will use the Google Classroom Virtual Learning Platform. Pre-K students will use Seesaw. Google Chrome is the recommended web browser. Google Meet is the communication tool teachers will use to video conference with students. Teachers will communicate with parents through district email and Parent Link. And every teacher will maintain a class Google site that you can access from your campus's website. No matter what kind of device you use, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, practice with it before the first day of school. Now actual learning begins by signing on to ClassLink. It's the portal to your virtual learning platform and many digital tools and resources you will use. To get to ClassLink, just go to fwisd.org-myfwisd. Click the "Sign In With Microsoft" button. Type in your district Active Directory username. That's the one with the letter S and your student ID number, followed by @stu.fwisd.org. By the way, you may occasionally need your Google username, which is similar. Instead of typing "stu" in the extension, spell out "students". Note that your password is the same for your Active Directory and Google accounts. And you're on your way to online learning. The ClassLink Launchpad links you to important applications, websites, and cloud storage.
Good job today guys.
For more information, including step-by-step video guides, go to fwisd.org/families. This is going to be your school area. You've created your home learning space. Now let's get you started online. First, know that kindergarten through 12th grade students will use the Google Classroom Virtual Learning Platform. Pre-K students will use Seesaw. Google Chrome is the recommended web browser. Google Meet is the communication tool teachers will use to video conference with students. Teachers will communicate with parents through district email and Parent Link. And every teacher will maintain a class Google site that you can access from your campus's website. No matter what kind of device you use, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, practice with it before the first day of school. Now actual learning begins by signing on to ClassLink. It's the portal to your virtual learning platform and many digital tools and resources you will use. To get to ClassLink, just go to fwisd.org-myfwisd. Click the "Sign In With Microsoft" button. Type in your district Active Directory username. That's the one with the letter S and your student ID number, followed by @stu.fwisd.org. By the way, you may occasionally need your Google username, which is similar. Instead of typing "stu" in the extension, spell out "students". Note that your password is the same for your Active Directory and Google accounts. And you're on your way to online learning. The ClassLink Launchpad links you to important applications, websites, and cloud storage.
Good job today guys.
For more information, including step-by-step video guides, go to fwisd.org/families. This is going to be your school area. You've created your home learning space. Now let's get you started online. First, know that kindergarten through 12th grade students will use the Google Classroom Virtual Learning Platform. Pre-K students will use Seesaw. Google Chrome is the recommended web browser. Google Meet is the communication tool teachers will use to video conference with students. Teachers will communicate with parents through district email and Parent Link. And every teacher will maintain a class Google site that you can access from your campus's website. No matter what kind of device you use, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, practice with it before the first day of school. Now actual learning begins by signing on to ClassLink. It's the portal to your virtual learning platform and many digital tools and resources you will use. To get to ClassLink, just go to fwisd.org-myfwisd. Click the "Sign In With Microsoft" button. Type in your district Active Directory username. That's the one with the letter S and your student ID number, followed by @stu.fwisd.org. By the way, you may occasionally need your Google username, which is similar. Instead of typing "stu" in the extension, spell out "students". Note that your password is the same for your Active Directory and Google accounts. And you're on your way to online learning. The ClassLink Launchpad links you to important applications, websites, and cloud storage.
Good job today guys.
For more information, including step-by-step video guides, go to fwisd.org/families. This is going to be your school area. You've created your home learning space. Now let's get you started online. First, know that kindergarten through 12th grade students will use the Google Classroom Virtual Learning Platform. Pre-K students will use Seesaw. Google Chrome is the recommended web browser. Google Meet is the communication tool teachers will use to video conference with students. Teachers will communicate with parents through district email and Parent Link. And every teacher will maintain a class Google site that you can access from your campus's website. No matter what kind of device you use, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, practice with it before the first day of school. Now actual learning begins by signing on to ClassLink. It's the portal to your virtual learning platform and many digital tools and resources you will use. To get to ClassLink, just go to fwisd.org-myfwisd. Click the "Sign In With Microsoft" button. Type in your district Active Directory username. That's the one with the letter S and your student ID number, followed by @stu.fwisd.org. By the way, you may occasionally need your Google username, which is similar. Instead of typing "stu" in the extension, spell out "students". Note that your password is the same for your Active Directory and Google accounts. And you're on your way to online learning. The ClassLink Launchpad links you to important applications, websites, and cloud storage.
Good job today guys.
For more information, including step-by-step video guides, go to fwisd.org/families. This is going to be your school area. You've created your home learning space. Now let's get you started online. First, know that kindergarten through 12th grade students will use the Google Classroom Virtual Learning Platform. Pre-K students will use Seesaw. Google Chrome is the recommended web browser. Google Meet is the communication tool teachers will use to video conference with students. Teachers will communicate with parents through district email and Parent Link. And every teacher will maintain a class Google site that you can access from your campus's website. No matter what kind of device you use, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, practice with it before the first day of school. Now actual learning begins by signing on to ClassLink. It's the portal to your virtual learning platform and many digital tools and resources you will use. To get to ClassLink, just go to fwisd.org-myfwisd. Click the "Sign In With Microsoft" button. Type in your district Active Directory username. That's the one with the letter S and your student ID number, followed by @stu.fwisd.org. By the way, you may occasionally need your Google username, which is similar. Instead of typing "stu" in the extension, spell out "students". Note that your password is the same for your Active Directory and Google accounts. And you're on your way to online learning. The ClassLink Launchpad links you to important applications, websites, and cloud storage.
Good job today guys.
For more information, including step-by-step video guides, go to fwisd.org/families. This is going to be your school area. You've created your home learning space. Now let's get you started online. First, know that kindergarten through 12th grade students will use the Google Classroom Virtual Learning Platform. Pre-K students will use Seesaw. Google Chrome is the recommended web browser. Google Meet is the communication tool teachers will use to video conference with students. Teachers will communicate with parents through district email and Parent Link. And every teacher will maintain a class Google site that you can access from your campus's website. No matter what kind of device you use, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, practice with it before the first day of school. Now actual learning begins by signing on to ClassLink. It's the portal to your virtual learning platform and many digital tools and resources you will use. To get to ClassLink, just go to fwisd.org-myfwisd. Click the "Sign In With Microsoft" button. Type in your district Active Directory username. That's the one with the letter S and your student ID number, followed by @stu.fwisd.org. By the way, you may occasionally need your Google username, which is similar. Instead of typing "stu" in the extension, spell out "students". Note that your password is the same for your Active Directory and Google accounts. And you're on your way to online learning. The ClassLink Launchpad links you to important applications, websites, and cloud storage.
Good job today guys.
For more information, including step-by-step video guides, go to fwisd.org/families. First, start each online school day helping your child set goals for the day.
Hey Sammy, what are you working on today?
Ask questions such as, what do you plan to work on today? What will you do if you get stuck? What resources do you need? And, how can I support you? Then check back periodically to make sure your child is engaged and learning. We all know how easy it is to get distracted online.
You're doing great!
Celebrate successes, like putting a star or a sticker on completed work. At the end of the school day, encourage your child to reflect on the day and develop a plan for tomorrow. Again, ask questions. What did you learn and accomplish today? What was challenging? How can we make tomorrow even better?
But it sounds like you got a good plan. Okay.
Be patient and flexible with your child and yourself. If your child becomes frustrated, suggest a short break.
Okay, let's take a break real quick. Alright, ready?
And finally, keep in contact with teachers, counselors, and others on campus who can answer your questions and hear any concerns you have. Remember, you are your child's best coach, providing support and encouragement and expectations.
Good job today guys. Proud of you.
For more information, including support material for learning tools and step-by-step video reference guides, visit fwisd.org/families.
Hello students and parents. As we take Fort Worth ISD forward into the new school year, there are two very important things to do now. First, circle, flag, bold on your calendar Tuesday, September the 8th, the first day of school. The other thing is something every student in Fort Worth ISD must do beginning now, August 24th, and that is, reset your student password. That's because this new school year will start very differently, all online, to keep you and your teachers safe. And, you must reset your password to have access to the learning platforms and programs you need to make online instruction work for you. In other words, if you received a student password anytime before August 24th, you still need to reset it. Here's what you do. Go to the district website, fwisd.org, and follow step-by-step instructions to change your password. There's a set of instructions for elementary and another for middle and high schools. Again, every student must do it.
Do I have to do it?
Yes, you have to do it.
Do we have to do it?
Yes, you all have to do it.
Do I have to do it?
Yes, you have to do it too, but you may want to get your mom and dad to help.
Y yo tambien lo tengo que hacer?
Si, tu tambien lo tienes que hacer.
You know what your password is? Keep logging in.
We're ready to take Fort Worth ISD forward on September the 8th. Reset your student password, and you'll be ready too.
So, do I have to do it?
Yes, you have to do it.
Today we're going to have a donation of school supplies from Sedalco Construction Company. It'll be something that'll be very impactful for them, something that they can use, getting resources into their hands to ensure that they're successful for the new year.
It's a wonderful partnership with Sedalco. They're great supporters of our school district. Kids need school supplies even in virtual setting, and we really appreciate their investment in our students and support here at NATHA Howe.
Being able to provide backpacks to kids with school supplies, one last thing they have to worry about, and hopefully just an opportunity to kind of ease their minds on some of those elements.
Thank you!
Today is an opportunity for kids to come and get resources and supplies for the new year. NATHA Howe was very lucky to get 100 backpacks from Sedalco Construction Services for our campus. It's really giving parents...
Antes de comenzar el nuevo año escolar y el aprendizaje en línea, ¿por qué no creamos nuestro espacio?
All right gentlemen, this is gonna be a space for our online learning.
Encuentra un entorno de aprendizaje en el hogar que sea cómodo y lo más libre de distracciones posible.
You know which class is working till lunch.
Trabajar allí repetidamente, establece una rutina y mantiene libros, artículos, todo lo que necesitamos en un solo lugar. Este espacio también debe tener acceso a internet de alta velocidad y una toma de corriente, un dispositivo digital, y en los espacios compartidos los audífonos son muy recomendables. Asegúrense de contactar a su escuela si necesitan un Chromebook y punto de acceso o hotspot.
10:30 we're gonna start working on math.
Al igual que en el salón de clase, los estudiantes necesitan una rutina diaria. Cuanto más nos apeguemos a un horario escolar regular, más fácil será para todos. Pero encontremos un horario que funcione para los estudiantes y las necesidades de la familia. Intenta programar las sesiones de aprendizaje virtual cuando haya menos distracciones. Usa un calendario para las fechas de entrega y las reuniones de clase. Usar distintos colores puede ayudar. Configura alarmas y alertas en tu teléfono según sea necesario y ya estás en un buen lugar para aprender.
You got some free time.
Para más información, visiten fwisd.org/familias.
This is going to be your school area.
Ya has creado tu espacio de aprendizaje en casa. Ahora vamos a prepararnos para nuestro espacio en línea. Primero, recuerden que los estudiantes de Kinder al 12º grado utilizarán la plataforma de aprendizaje virtual Google Classroom. Los estudiantes de pre-kinder usarán la herramienta Seesaw. Se recomienda utilizar el navegador Google Chrome. Google Meet es la herramienta de comunicación que los profesores utilizarán para realizar videoconferencias con los estudiantes. Los maestros se comunicarán con los padres a través del correo electrónico del distrito y de Parent Link. Y cada maestro del distrito mantendrá un sitio de Google o Google Site para la clase al que ustedes pueden acceder desde el sitio web de su escuela. Sin importar el tipo de dispositivo que utilicemos, ya sea laptop, tableta, o teléfono inteligente, practiquemos con él antes del primer día de clases. Ahora, el aprendizaje real comienza al iniciar sesión en ClassLink. Esta es la puerta a nuestra plataforma de aprendizaje virtual y a muchas herramientas y recursos digitales que utilizaremos. Para ir a ClassLink solo ve a fwisd.org-myfwisd. Haz clic en el botón "Iniciar sesión con Microsoft". Escribe tu nombre de usuario del directorio del distrito. Este es el que tiene la letra S y tu número de estudiante. y tu número de estudiante seguido de @stu.fwisd.org. Por cierto, es posible que algunas veces necesites tu nombre de usuario de Google, que es similar, en lugar de escribir "stu" en la extensión de letra "students". Tengamos en cuenta que la contraseña es la misma para las cuentas del directorio y de Google. Y ya estamos en camino al aprendizaje en línea. La plataforma ClassLink nos vincula hacia aplicaciones importantes, sitios web, y almacenamiento en línea.
Good job today, guys.
Para obtener más información, incluidas las guías de videos paso a paso, vayan a fwisd.org/familias.
Go ahead and open your computers, and let's get ready to log in.
Estos cinco consejos son solo para ustedes, padres de Fort Worth ISD. Los consejos les ayudarán a hacer que sus hijos aprovechen al máximo el aprendizaje en línea y se mantengan en buen camino hasta que las escuelas se vuelvan a abrir de manera segura. Primero, comiencen cada día escolar en línea ayudando a sus hijos a establecer las metas del día. Hagan preguntas como, ¿en qué planeas trabajar hoy? ¿Qué harías si tienes problemas? ¿Qué recursos necesitas? O, ¿cómo puedo ayudarte? Luego, regresen cada cierto tiempo para asegurarse de que sus hijos estén aplicados y aprendiendo. Todos sabemos lo fácil que es distraerse en línea. Celebren sus éxitos, como poner una estrella o calcomanía en el trabajo terminado. Al final del día escolar, animen a sus hijos a reflexionar sobre el día y hagan un plan para el siguiente día. También pueden preguntarles, ¿qué aprendiste y lograste hoy? ¿Qué fue retador? ¿Cómo podemos hacer para que mañana sea aún mejor? Sean pacientes y flexibles con sus hijos y con ustedes mismos. Si ellos se frustran, pueden sugerirles un breve descanso.
Okay, let's take a break real quick. All right, you ready?
Finalmente, manténganse en contacto con los maestros, consejeros, y el personal de la escuela, quienes pueden responder sus preguntas y escuchar cualquier inquietud que tengan. Recuerden, ustedes son los mejores entrenadores de sus hijos, brindando apoyo, aliento, y expectativas.
Good job, they got.
Para obtener más información, incluido material de apoyo y guías de referencia en videos paso a paso, visiten fwisd.org/familias.
Today, we're going to have a donation of school supplies from Sedalco Construction Company. It'll be something that'll be very impactful for them, something that they can use, getting resources into their hands to ensure that they're successful for the new year.
It's a wonderful partnership with Sedalco. They're great supporters of our school district. Kids need school supplies even in virtual setting, and we really appreciate their investment in our students and support here at NATHA HOWELL.
Being able to provide backpacks to kids with school supplies. One last thing they have to worry about, and hopefully just an opportunity to kind of ease their minds on some of those elements.
Thank you.
Today is an opportunity for kids to come and get resources and supplies for the new year. NATHA HOWELL was very lucky to...
Fort Worth ISD teachers, wow, what a wild five months we have just experienced. We all know education is an ever-changing profession that is both demanding and rewarding. But none of us could have ever imagined this public health crisis and the unique challenge it represents. Thank you for your continued dedication to your profession and our students.
I'm going to start sharing my screen.
So now we know that virtual instruction will be a part of our educational experience. Thanks in part to your feedback, we will be able to make this a much better experience for students, parents, and you this fall. For that to happen, we know above all else, we must let you do what you're expert at: teaching our students. With that in mind, and our students' home learning environments, we are adopting an asynchronous plan for this fall. That simply means students can work on their schoolwork at their own pace. This will provide latitude for the many challenges they face when learning at home. Some students will want to follow a traditional schedule. Others may work better in the evening when parents are available to help. Still, others may need to help younger siblings or share technology. An asynchronous plan does not mean you won't be interacting directly with your students. Actually, we want you to engage with students every day. Our pre-K students will have at least three hours of learning engagement every day. Kindergarten through 12th grade students will have a minimum of four hours of instructional engagement each day. Instructional engagement will also come in a variety of ways. You may pre-record lessons that students will view. You may assign group projects. You may host small group lessons. And some of these activities, especially the direct instruction activities, will be provided synchronously, meaning some of your teaching will be scheduled with the whole class logged on at the same time. We are not limiting you. We want you to provide virtual instruction in a format that works for you and your students. One of the most important questions for you is, what platform are we using? We wanted to choose a platform that would be as consistent as possible for everyone, students and parents, and all teachers in all grade levels. We also wanted to utilize something you're already familiar with, rather than one more new program you would have to learn. For those reasons, we chose Google Suite for all kindergarten through 12th grade classrooms. Pre-K teachers will use Seesaw. Some of you may say, "Google is not a true learning management system." You're right. But using Google right now will allow you to work in a system that is familiar. While we continue to look for the right, high-quality LMS that can be used district-wide, I know you all can successfully design plans around this decision. We do welcome your input. In fact, we will ask for it in our study to find a new LMS this school year. So, how can you get ready for virtual instruction? Many of you told us there wasn't professional learning this summer to prepare you to teach virtually. While all summer professional learning touched on the virtual environment and teaching through technology, you said you didn't know which specific sessions to take. We heard you, and now have virtual instruction sessions that will get you ready for this school year. We've identified time during our professional learning week for all teachers to take these sessions. But the sessions are available now if you want to view them and begin your learning. There is much to be done, and we want to help as much as possible. District and campus support staff will be available to help you however we can. Our team is putting together sample and model lessons and activities that you may use during the first six weeks of school. Instructional support staff will be on campus each day if you need assistance with virtual instruction. Your school will be available if that creates a better environment for you to virtually teach. We encourage you to take advantage of these supports, but you make the decision based on what's right for your classrooms and your students. We will be with you to help, support, and problem solve, but you're the experts that will make this happen. Your active engagement with your students, your communication with your parents, and your letting us know what you need are essential. If you do these three things, I know we will have a great virtual educational experience for our students. Here's to a great 2021 school year.
Industry-driven, gold seal programs and schools of choice offer Fort Worth ISD families and students the power of choice, now more than ever, to go beyond the basic, beyond the traditional, to find the pathway that's a match to a student's interest, goals, and learning style. And just look at the programs and schools to choose from. You've got goals and dreams for the future. We've got a high school experience to match.
There you go.
Fort Worth ISD Gold Seal Programs of Choice are built for dreamers like you, the problem solvers, the curious minds, the creators of art and ideas. Gold Seal Programs deliver expert guidance your checklist, hands-on learning, certifications, college credits, and community partners who support your learning. A great example? Our PTEC early college high schools that combine high school, college, and career. Students can earn an associate degree, visit job sites, build relationships, and develop workplace skills and knowledge. Our partners enrich every Gold Seal program, open doors to careers, and put you ahead of the herd. There's a Gold Seal pathway to fit your interests. Whether it's making machines run better and fly higher, or improving health and housing, whether it's serving on the front lines, or protecting citizens online. Bring your biggest dreams and determination here, where you belong, in a Fort Worth ISD program of choice.
Take graphic?
Your choice. The atmosphere is electric at Fort Worth ISD Gold Seal Schools of Choice. These smaller, well-focused learning communities prepare students for college and careers in the most innovative ways. Every school day hums with activity and empowerment at Young Men's Leadership Academy and Young Women's Leadership Academy. Future leaders are at work here, gaining knowledge, experiences, and character while developing lifelong strategies for success. Move toward your dreams at the IM Terrill Academy for STEM and VPA. On the STEM side, students design and problem solve in a high-tech makerspace. In VPA, students train in state-of-the-art studios and perform in a magnificent hall. The school's Cowan Academy in the Humanities elevates the study of literature, history, art, and philosophy. Imagine learning multiple languages, exploring global cultures, and taking academic courses in English and Spanish. The World Languages Institute is perfect for students from Spanish immersion and dual-language programs, and anyone else eager to learn Spanish immersion-style. Early college high schools merge high school, college, and career. Students go to school on Tarrant County College campuses and can earn an associate degree for free. Marine Creek Collegiate High School focuses on high academic achievement and skills for success. The Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences is a hub of health science studies with hands-on laboratory learning supported by medical industry partners. TCC South Fort Worth ISD Collegiate High takes industry partnerships to a new level. It's the district's first PTEC early college high school. Partners such as Encore and the Fort Worth Water Department help students build skills that industries want. Schools of choice are not just for older students. Collectively, four applied learning academies serve kindergarten through the 8th grade. Students apply their knowledge to solve real-life issues as they investigate the bigger world. Our Montessori program guides kindergarten through 8th grade students in multi-age classrooms that are safe and respectful. Students work through lessons, interact with others, cultivate self-discipline, and take early ownership of their education. A great start to a lifetime of learning. One-size-fits-all education is so last century. Pick your cutting-edge Gold Seal pathway to college, career, and community leadership. Learn more at fwisd.org/choice.
I belong here.
There's a place all parents want for their young child, where learning happens in leaps and bounds in literacy, math, and social skills, where teachers are state-certified and super-suited to provide structure, encouragement, and a nurturing, safe space for every child.
And that place is Fort Worth ISD. Pre-K and kindergarten. Register online starting April 1st. Your child belongs here.
Well, hello and welcome to our 10 elementary and secondary Fort Worth ISD Teachers of the Year. Congratulations to each of you for your dedication to our students. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Teachers of the Year from both elementary and secondary schools. First, we have with us Jennifer Sanchez from Western Hills Elementary. Hello, Jennifer. Brooke Darby from DeSavalle Elementary. Carmenia Moreno from Sam Rosen Elementary. Amy Kraft from Carter Park Elementary. Mireya Cadena from Cesar Chavez Elementary. Kathy Elliott from TAB's Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences. Derek Smolosky from Eastern Hills High School. Matthew Bradford from Meadowbrook Middle School. Vicki Robertson from Polytechnic High School. And Ray Horton of the TCC South Collegiate Academy. Congratulations to all 10 of you. You found out about your selection this past Monday at 10 surprise Zoom meetings. Your principals and colleagues attended those meetings and celebrated with you, which gave them the opportunity to publicly express their gratitude for what you do for our students and for your colleagues. Our Teachers of the Year have historically not only been wonderful with young people, but they've also been teacher leaders and great colleagues and great team members. You were first selected as Campus Teacher of the Year because you're student-centered. In these challenging times, you've all risen to the occasion and helped our students transition to virtual learning. You're innovative, you're creative, and you have a heart for our students. Months after the campus recognition, you've risen to the challenge again of teaching online from home in a more student-centered way than ever, as you draw from your experience, your creativity, and your innovation, more so than ever before. This is why we are recognizing all of you as winners. We're very fortunate, Fort Worth ISD, to have great leadership in our governing board. And I know that our trustee, President of Board, Asinta Ramos Jr., would like to say a few words, and he feels exactly the same way. At this time, I'll turn it over to Asinta.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. Good afternoon to our 10 district Teachers of the Year. Life is so different this spring, but what is not different is the dedication you give to our students. Our students need your expertise, your stability, and your support more than ever. And we see that support every single day. You are conducting classes online, posting YouTube video lessons, and posting activities on social media to meet your students' academic needs. We have seen the parades go through students' neighborhoods and special words of encouragement on social media to help our students emotionally. They miss you, and you let them know how much you care. These are very different times, and it called for a different approach to selecting the district Teacher of the Year. We decided to recognize all of you for the winners that you are each and every day, especially in times like this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So this is the first time in our history that we're celebrating all 10 of our district Teachers of the Year. We're sorry that we can't host the annual awards dinner, but please believe me when I tell you how proud we all are of you. We will post a special video on our district website and shine the digital spotlight on all of you. We have a special guest with us this afternoon, Maybree Jackson of Central Market and HEB. And during these difficult times with coronavirus, HEB has been a wonderful community partner, helping families in need and really stepping up to the plate more so than many, many other corporations. Central Market has been the annual sponsor of both Campus Teacher of the Year and District Teacher of the Year recognition programs for many years. They're a great friend to the Fort Worth ISD, and we appreciate their continued support, especially now. Maybree, I think she has a special message for all of you.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Scribner, and we are so excited to be here again. We're here every year to celebrate the Fort Worth Teacher of the Year events because we're committed to strong public education, and it's a system that begins and ends with extraordinary teachers. And that's all of you that are here today. And you know, even as you're adapting to online communication with your students and your parents, your role as an educator and as a neighborhood builder and a community builder and a nation builder, it's still really important as your students learn outside of your classroom. And the knowledge and skills that you instill in our kids, they impact businesses and families here in Fort Worth. Every person in this town has had at least one teacher that taught us through love and discipline to strive through excellence, regardless if you're sitting in the classroom or if you're sitting at home learning online. And not one of you picked the easy path to career fulfillment or personal riches. That's for certainly, you know, we're certainly sure about that. And that's never been more evident as it is now. But one thing that we know is that each of you picked the most important path to impact the lives of others. And we're proud at HEB and Central Market to stand with you in your quest for academic excellence. And as Dr. Scribner said, though we normally deliver a cake and balloons and flowers to your classrooms, we are sending each of you $100 Central Market gift cards so you can buy a great dinner on us. But more importantly, we're recognizing each of you with $2,500 in recognition for your excellent achievement. But you've earned it, and we cannot say thank you enough. So you will each receive $2,500 and then your $100 gift card, all right? So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maybree. That is incredibly generous and first-of-a-kind effort from you all to this large group. We really appreciate you and appreciate HEB and Central Market. We want to congratulate again all of our teachers on being named District Teacher of the Year. This is a wonderful accomplishment for you and for your school. This recognition reflects not only the kind of teacher you are, but the kind of person you are. We always talk about content. Kids don't care about content until they feel connection. And in each one of your cases, you're not only experts in your areas of content, but you're also experts at connecting with our students. And we appreciate it, and they appreciate it. You're knowledgeable, dedicated, caring, and that's what our students need right now. It has been said that to the world, you may be just one person, but to one person, you may be the world. And we thank you again for your dedication to our students. Have a great rest of the week. Take care, and please be safe. We need you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody else.
Thank you as well.
Thank you so much. I'm so honored to be here. Thank you. Thank you to our community partners for being here and supporting our schools. And thank you, Dr. Scribner, for giving us this opportunity. It's been amazing. I'm super thankful.
Thank you so very much. It's just a huge privilege to get to serve the students of Fort Worth and to help erase the opportunity gap in our district.
I just want to say thank you very much. I appreciate everything you guys are doing for us and all the support we're getting through these times that are changing. Thank you again.
I want to thank, first of all, Gavin. I want to thank the district for this honor, and it is a privilege because now this honor reinforces us to keep fighting for our kids and help them to reach their dreams. Thank you so much.
I want to thank my school, my students, my district, HEB, and Central Market. Just thank you for this opportunity.
I want to say thank you and give a huge shout-out to everyone in Fort Worth, especially everyone at my campus, and a big shout-out to all my band students and families. They're the ones why I'm here. I want to give a special congratulations to Matthew Bradford because it's pretty awesome to have two secondary Teachers of the Year in the same pyramid. So congratulations, congratulations, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. You too. I'm thankful to God for this opportunity. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. Scribner and Ms. Jackson for taking the time to recognize all the teachers here. And thankful to my staff who've helped me grow and become what I am today, and to my students that I spend time with every day. Thank you all for the opportunity.
I just want to thank y'all for giving me this honor. And I thank my campus and the community and all my students that I just get to do what I love doing every single day, and that's the honor in itself.
Yes, I'd like to thank Ms. Jackson, HEB, and City Markets for their participation in this. I too would like to thank Ms. Collins and my fellow staff members that it's a team effort that I'm just happy to be part of the team. And so feel so blessed to be honored this way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
And the rest of our school board.
And our school board as well.
Industry-driven Gold Seal programs and schools of choice offer Fort Worth ISD families and students the power of choice, now more than ever, to go beyond the basic, beyond the traditional, to find the pathway that's a match to a student's interests, goals, and learning style. And just look at the programs and schools to choose from. You've got goals and dreams for the future. We've got a high school experience to match.
There you go.
Fort Worth ISD Gold Seal programs of choice are built for dreamers like you, the problem solvers, the curious minds, the creators of art and ideas. Gold Seal programs deliver expert guidance, hands-on learning, certifications, college credits, and community partners who support your learning. A great example: our PTEC early college high schools that combine high school, college, and career. Students can earn an associate degree, visit job sites, build relationships, and develop workplace skills and knowledge. Our partners enrich every Gold Seal program, open doors to careers, and put you ahead of the herd. There's a Gold Seal pathway to fit your interests. Whether it's making machines run better and fly higher, or improving health and housing. Whether it's serving on the front lines, or protecting citizens online. Bring your biggest dreams and determination here, where you belong, in a Fort Worth ISD Program of Choice.
Take graphic?
Your choice. The atmosphere is electric at Fort Worth ISD Gold Seal Schools of Choice. These smaller, well-focused learning communities prepare students for college and careers in the most innovative ways. Every school day hums with activity and empowerment at Young Men's Leadership Academy and Young Women's Leadership Academy. Future leaders are at work here gaining knowledge, experiences, and character while developing lifelong strategies for success. Move toward your dreams at the I M Terrill Academy for STEM and VPA. On the STEM side, students design and problem solve in a high-tech maker space. In VPA, students train in state-of-the-art studios and perform in a magnificent hall. The school's Cowan Academy in the Humanities elevates the study of literature, history, art, and philosophy. Imagine learning multiple languages, exploring global cultures, and taking academic courses in English and Spanish. The World Languages Institute is perfect for students from Spanish immersion and dual-language programs, and anyone else eager to learn Spanish immersion-style. Early college high schools merge high school, college, and career. Students go to school on Tarrant County College campuses and can earn an associate degree for free. Marine Creek Collegiate High School focuses on high academic achievement and skills for success. The Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences is a hub of health science studies with hands-on laboratory learning supported by medical industry partners. TCC South Fort Worth ISD Collegiate High takes industry partnerships to a new level. It's the district's first PTEC early college high school. Partners such as Encore and the Fort Worth Water Department help students build skills that industries want. Schools of Choice are not just for older students. Collectively, four applied learning academies serve kindergarten through the eighth grade. Students apply their knowledge to solve real-life issues as they investigate the bigger world. Our Montessori program guides kindergarten-through-eighth-grade students in multi-age classrooms that are safe and respectful. Students work through lessons, interact with others, cultivate self-discipline, and take early ownership of their education, a great start to a lifetime of learning. One-size-fits-all education is so last-century. Pick your cutting-edge Gold Seal pathway to college, career, and community leadership. Learn more at fwisd.org/choice.
Esto es lo bueno de leer. Cuanto más lo hacemos, más aprendemos acerca de todo.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Beatriz Bressa, maestra de kindergarten en la escuela de Glen Park Elementary en el distrito de Fort Worth ISD. Hoy vamos a clasificar y a categorizar palabras diciendo cuál no se corresponde con las demás. Clasificar o categorizar es ordenar varios elementos usando un criterio común, es decir, agrupar por semejanzas. Vamos a clasificar y a categorizar estos objetos. Puedes pensar que tienen en común, en qué se parecen. Mientras miras estos objetos, fíjate en sus características y cómo se ven. Podemos agruparlo por colores, podemos agruparlo por tamaño, por forma, por tipo. Estas imágenes se pueden agrupar en dos categorías diferentes. Podemos hacer una categoría de animales y poner a todos los animales ahí, y otra categoría de útiles escolares. Estamos clasificando y categorizando por tipo. Vamos ahora a hacer un juego. Quiero que mires esos dibujos y me digas qué objeto no se corresponde con los demás. Si dijiste "el gato", muy bien, porque el gato no es una fruta. Ahora es tu turno. Dí que objeto no pertenece a ese grupo y por qué. Qué objeto no se corresponde en ese grupo? Muy bien, el avión, porque el avión no es una prenda de vestir. Y en estas imágenes, qué objeto no se corresponde? El oso, porque no es una flor, es un juguete. Y ahí, qué objeto no se corresponde con los demás? ¿Cuál no pertenece al grupo? Muy bien, la hamburguesa, porque la hamburguesa no es un juguete, es comida. Vamos a hacer uno más. Fíjate en esas imágenes, qué objeto no se corresponde con el grupo? Muy bien, el libro, porque el libro no es un color. Ahora es tu turno. Te invito a que en tu casa sigas clasificando y categorizando. Que pongas objetos en grupos que tienen algo en común. Espero que te haya gustado esta actividad. Gracias.
Want a high school experience that moves you? Explore the I M Terrill Academy for STEM and VPA. On the STEM side, students innovate, design, and problem solve in a high-tech maker space. VPA students blend academics with intensive training in the arts. State-of-the-art studios, practice rooms, Black Fox Theater, and an amazing performance hall. The I M Terrill Academy for STEM and VPA, shaping innovators, artists, and lifelong learners.
Muy buenos días amigos. Aquí mi estelgado y hoy vamos a aprender sobre escritura persuasiva. Hoy vamos a aprender lo que es, cómo identificarla, y cómo puedes crear una en tu casa. Veamos. Escritura persuasiva es un estilo de escritura donde el autor quiere que el lector piense o haga algo. ¿Cuántas veces hemos leído un texto y luego de leerla hacemos exactamente lo que nos pide el autor? No es magia, es porque el autor nos quiso persuadir y es que quiso darnos detalles importantes para que siguéramos su opinión. Veamos estos ejemplos. El ejercicio. Hacer ejercicio es muy bueno. Cuando haces ejercicios, tus músculos se hacen más fuertes. El ejercicio ayuda a tu salud mental y emocional. Cuando te ejercitas, ayudas a tu corazón de no padecer de enfermedades. ¿Cuál es el propósito del autor? Muy bien, este texto el autor quiso que nosotros hiciéramos ejercicio. Yo también quiero hacer ejercicio, pero ¿cómo fue que el autor nos pudo persuadir? Porque utilizó detalles importantes. Habló que los músculos se hacen más fuertes cuando hacemos ejercicio, ayuda a salud mental y emocional, y ayuda a que nuestro corazón no tenga enfermedades. Veamos otro ejemplo. Una mascota. Mamá y papá, yo quiero una mascota. Las mascotas son buenos acompañantes cuando nos sentimos solos. Las mascotas nos ayudan a ser responsables porque aprendemos a cuidar de ellos. ¿Cuál fue el propósito del autor? Muy bien, nos quiso convencer, bueno, a su mamá y a su papá que le compráramos una mascota, pero utilizó detalles como "nos acompañan" y "nos ayudan a ser responsables porque las aprendemos a cuidar". Ahora, amiguitos, hasta aquí mi clase. Recuerda que persuadir es cuando un autor trata de convencer al lector para que diga o haga algo. Tu turno. Puedes en tu casa también crear uno, pero con el clima. Trata de convencer a alguien que le guste tu mismo clima. Hasta aquí mi clase, y nos vemos en la próxima. Cuidate mucho.
Hola, yo me llamo María Fernández. Enseño kindergarten en la escuela Cesar Chavez, en el distrito de Fort Worth ISD. Hoy vamos a estar hablando de sílabas trabadas. El objetivo de hoy es leer palabras con sílabas trabadas con "cl" y con "cr". Cuando ponemos "cl" con una vocal, produce una nueva sílaba. Ahora vamos a practicar. "Cl" con la "a" dice "cla", "cl" con la "e" dice "cle", "cl" con la "i" dice "cri", "cl" con la "o" dice "clo", "cl" con la "u" dice "clu". Vamos a leer las nuevas sílabas. "cla", "cle", "cri", "clo", "clu". Muy bien. Ahora vamos a ver la sílaba trabada con "cr". Cuando ponemos "cr" con una vocal, produce una nueva sílaba. Vamos a practicar. "Cr" con la "a" dice "gra", "cr" con la "e" dice "cre", "cr" con la "i" dice "cri", "cr" con la "o" dice "cro", "cr" con la "u" dice "cru". Ahora vamos a ver unos ejemplos con "cla", como en "clavel". Vamos a dividirla en sílabas. "Cla", "vel". Vamos a leerlo rápido. "Clavel", muy bien. Ahora tenemos "ple", como en "bicicleta". Vamos a dividirla en sílabas. "Bi", "si", "cle", "ta". Ahora rápido. "Bicicleta", muy bien. Ahora vemos "cri", como en "clínica". Vamos a leerlo en sílabas. "Cri", "ni", "ka". Ahora rápido. "Clínica", muy bien. Seguimos con "clo", como en "triciclo". Vamos a dividirlo en sílabas. "Tri", "si", "clo". Ahora rápido. "Triciclo", excelente. Ahora vemos "clu", como en "club". Vamos a dividirlo en sílabas. "Clu", "club" no más tiene una sílaba. Vamos a volver a leerlo rápido. "Clu". Ahora vemos "gra", como en "cryola". Vamos a dividirlo en sílabas. "gra", "yo", "la". Ahora rápido. "Cryola", excelente. Ahora vemos "cre", como en "crecer", "cre", "ser". Ahora rápido. "Crecer". Ahora podemos ver "cri", como en "escribe". Vamos a dividir en sílabas. "Es", "cri", "be". Ahora rápido. "Escribe", perfecto. Ahora vamos a ver la sílaba "cro", como en "micrófono". Vamos a dividir esta palabra en sílabas. excelente. Ahora vemos "cru", como en "crucero", "cru", "sero". Ahora rápido. "Crucero", maravilloso. Ahora vamos a practicar usando estas sílabas trabadas para completar la palabra. Aquí vemos una sílaba y le falta una de las sílabas trabadas. Este ejemplo es "clima". ¿Cuál es la sílaba trabada que le falta a esta palabra? Excelente. Si dijeron "cri", estaban correctos. "Clima". Vamos a hacer otro ejemplo. Aquí falta una sílaba trabada. Aquí vemos una imagen de "crema". ¿Cuál es la sílaba que le falta a esta palabra? Si dijeron "cre", están correctos. "Crema", le faltaba la sílaba "cre". Vamos a hacer otro ejemplo. Aquí falta una sílaba trabada. Vemos la imagen de "recreo". ¿Cuál es la sílaba trabada que falta? Si dijeron "cre", están correctos. "Recreo", "recreo". Ahora espero que le hayan gustado aprender de las sílabas trabadas. Hasta pronto.
No hay nada más emocionante que el tema de la ciencia. ¿Qué va a aprender hoy? Averigúenselo en el próximo segmento de Unidas para Aprender.
Muy buenos días, mi nombre es Sedwin Valencia. Soy maestro de kindergarten de la escuela Morning Sight en el distrito de Fort Worth. Hoy les voy a plantear una solución para los problemas de comunicación que hay dentro de su casa. Es un día muy divertida y seguramente ya lo han visto antes. Si no lo han visto, pues van a aprender cómo se hace un teléfono casero. Nos vemos. Bueno, para nuestro teléfono casero vamos a necesitar... Bueno, para nuestro teléfono casero vamos a necesitar un par de vasos. Es una buena recomendación tener los iguales, los dos vasos iguales. Pueden ser vasos grandes, pueden ser vasos medianos o pueden ser vasos pequeños o de otro material como por ejemplo estos que son de coporte. Bueno, y necesitamos también hilo. Hilo de helado, de hilo que utilizamos puede ser utilizamos para elevar cometas y necesitamos un tornillito con punta. Este es un poco más seguro que otro objeto, así que un tornillito nos va a ayudar para poder hacer proyecto completamente. Bueno, primero vamos a proceder a hacerle unos pequeños orificios o huecos al fondo del vaso. Como la comunicación requiere dos personas pues por eso necesitamos dos vasos para poder que haya un emisor y un receptor. Y como es comunicación debe haber una respuesta al emisor comunicarse, el receptor escucha el mensaje y responde al emisor. Así pues tenemos ya que vamos a atravesar el hilo por el agujero que hicimos. Le hacemos un nudito pequeño, pero cuidamos de que sea lo suficientemente grande para que no se salga y lo probamos, así como lo estamos haciendo en este momento. Y la longitud del hilo puede ser la que queramos. Mientras más largo mejor porque nos va a permitir probar realmente si nuestro teléfono está funcionando correctamente. Luego ponemos el hilo con mucho cuidado en el otro vaso como está, estamos viendo acá. Hacemos bien el nudito. Nos encargamos de que quede bien seguro para que la comunicación sea más efectiva y no haya interferencia. Ahora que ya estamos listos, ya lo estamos probando y quedó nuestro teléfono hecho. Listo. Yo te lo pones en el oído. No lo jaléis, no lo jaléis. Ánman. Alejandro, ánman. Bueno, espero que hagan muchas llamadas y recuerden que ese es un plan gratuito, no tienen que pagar nada y esto sí se van a divertir. Nos vemos en la próxima.
Hay un lugar que todo padre quiere para sus hijos donde se aprende a pasos grandes.
Ese lugar es el prekinder y kinder de Fort Worth ISD. Inscríbanse en línea empezando el primero de abril.
Buenos días, soy la señora Gabriela Robos, maestra de prekinder de la escuela de South Hills. Hoy estaremos aprendiendo de todas las cosas hermosas que podemos ver en un cielo en la noche. Me los voy a llevar un ratito para el lago Benbrook en Fort Worth para que vean esa hermosa luna que me acompañaba. Esta era la luna llena que me acompañaba. Cuando está cirredonda que parece un sol de noche se dice que es luna llena, pero no siempre la luna se mira así. No siempre es luna llena. La luna toma diferentes formas durante todo un mes y a eso le llamamos las fases de la luna. Esa noche en el lago también habían estrellas, pero la cámara no pudo captar esa belleza. Para eso se necesita un telescopio. Los telescopios nos ayudan a mirar el cielo en las noches con más claridad y mucha más nitidez. El cielo en la noche no solo tiene luna y estrellas, tiene muchas otras cosas que se las mostraré mientras les leo un hermoso libro. Pero antes de leer el libro quiero que hagan predicciones, hable con su papá, con su mamá y piensen qué cosas vamos a encontrar en ese libro, qué cosas van a ver, qué sale en la noche cuando todos dormimos. El cielo por la noche por Saiga Kres. El cielo por la noche. El cielo nocturno está lleno de cosas maravillosas que puedes ver. Podrías ver la luna. La luna es la luz más brillante en el cielo nocturno. Cuando la luna aparece una curva delgada se le dice luna creciente. Podrías ver millones de estrellas. Las estrellas producen su propia luz como el sol. Las estrellas se miran como si estuvieran tintineando. Si las observamos con cuidado pareciera que estuvieran colocadas de una manera que crean una forma o un patrón. Los grupos de estrellas se llaman constelaciones. Puedes encontrar a la osa mayor. La osa mayor como otras muchas constelaciones se forma al conectar las estrellas que desde aquí, desde el planeta Tierra parecen unos puntitos que estamos conectando. Y cuando la miramos, en el caso de la osa mayor, parece una gran osa en el espacio. Podrías ver un planeta. Los planetas y las lunas no pueden producir su propia luz. Solamente los podemos ver a la luz del sol. Temprano por la mañana puedes ver el planeta Venus brillando en el oriente. En el orden de los planetas de nuestro sistema solar, Venus es el segundo planeta. Si tienes suerte podrías ver un meteorito. Los meteoritos parecen estrellas fugaces con colas largas, se mueven muy rápido. El cielo nocturno está lleno de cosas maravillosas. Sale esta noche y mira hacia el cielo. Que puedes ver el fin. ¿Qué tal? ¿Acertaron en sus predicciones? ¿Esas fueron las cosas que ustedes pensaban que iba a estar en el libro? Espero que sí. Y si no pueden agregar cosas nuevas en su lista. Ya para finalizar con esta lección les voy a enseñar cómo hacer un planetario para que lo tengan en su casa y puedan ver la luna, las estrellas y las constelaciones desde su cuarto. Vamos que les enseño. Para hacer el planetario solamente necesitamos un pedazo de papel de construcción negro y con un lápiz o una pluma le empezamos a abrir agujeros a todo el papel negro y hacemos un círculo más grande que va a representar la luna. Y el planetario les debe quedar parecido a este. Miren, hasta hice la constelación de la osa mayor siguiendo los puntitos conectándolos. Ok, así es como queda nuestro planetario. Apago la luz. Miren qué hermoso. Tenemos la luna, las estrellas y todas las constelaciones adentro de nuestra casa. Espero que hagan esta actividad pronto. Adiós mis amiguitos, nos vemos pronto. Buenos días, soy la señora Gabriela Robos, maestra de prekinder de la escuela de South Hills. Hoy les voy a enseñar la canción de ping pong y aquí se los presento. ¿Quién es ping pong? Ping pong es un muñeco que es muy guapo y es todo de cartón. Y esta canción se trata de un niño de cartón que se lavaba las manos con agua y con jabón. Y también él se peinaba con un peine de marfil como el que tienen sus manitos. Y aunque le daban jalones porque su cabello siempre estaba enredado, no lloraba. Así que todos los niños en toda la escuela y en todos lados querían ser amigos de ping pong porque era un niño muy dulce. Así que bueno, no se diga más y les voy a enseñar la canción, pero antes les voy a enseñar rapidito cómo hice a ping pong para que ustedes también lo puedan hacer en su casa. Vamos que les enseño. Con un pedazo de cartón de una caja lo abrí y tracé la cabeza de ping pong con un plato. Luego le dibujé el resto del cuerpo y usé materiales que tenía en mi casa para ponerle la ropa, los ojos, los zapatos. Usé papel de aluminio para los zapatitos, algodón azul para el cabello, pero ustedes pueden ponerle cualquier cosa que puedan usar en su casa. Bueno, ya vimos cómo hicimos a ping pong. Ahora vamos a cantar la canción. Y para cantar esta canción cuando ustedes la canten hagan movimientos como si ustedes fueran unos muñecos. ¿Cómo hacen los muñecos? Se mueven así, ¿verdad? Así que ustedes también pueden hacer sus movimientos cuando cantamos la canción de ping pong. Bueno, empezamos. Vamos a aprendernos las primero. Ping pong es un muñeco muy guapo y de cartón. Se lava sus manitos con agua y con jabón. Se desenreda el pelo con peine de marfil. Y aunque no le gusta no llora ni hace así. Ping pong dame la mano con un fuerte apretón. Que quiero ser tu amigo. Ping pong, ping pong, ping pong. ¿Vieron qué linda la canción? Ahora ustedes y Fanny la practicanán conmigo diciendo la última palabra de la oración, completando la última palabra. Empezamos. ¿Estás lista Fanny?
Estoy lista.
Ping pong es un...
Muñeco.
Muy guapo y...
De cartón.
Se lava las manitos con...
Agua y con jabón.
Se desenreda el pelo con peine de...
Marfil.
Y aunque no le gusta no llora...
Ni hace así.
Ping pong. Dame la mano con un fuerte apretón.
Que quiero ser tu amigo.
Ping pong, ping pong, ping pong. Muy bien, parecida que Fanny ya se la sabe y yo creo que ustedes también. Vamos a practicarla todos juntitos y la cantamos una vez más. Ok, ahora todos juntos. Ping pong es un muñeco muy guapo y de cartón. Se lava sus manitos con agua y con jabón. Se desenreda el pelo con peine de marfil. Y aunque no le gusta no llora ni hace así. Ping pong dame la mano con un fuerte apretón. Que quiero ser tu amiga. Ping pong, ping pong, ping pong. Qué linda la cantaron. Bueno, hagan su muñequito el ping pong para que sigan cantándola y recuerden lavarse las manos todos los días como lo hace ping pong. Adiós mis amiguitos, nos vemos pronto.
Es hora de cuidarnos. Vamos a ver el próximo segmento de Unidos para Aprender.
Muy buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es Edwin Valencia. Soy maestro del distrito de Fort Worth. Enseño kinder en la escuela elemental Morning Side donde empieza el éxito y estoy muy orgulloso de hoy poderles presentar una actividad. Durante este tiempo que hemos estado en la casa por salud, a veces nos aburrimos si queremos hacer cosas más divertidas o más interesantes, pues tenemos que buscar cosas que tenemos en la casa disponibles para poderles sacar provecho y divertirnos un poco. Como por ejemplo estas cajas que acaban de ver de plástico que tengo disponibles. También hay cajas de cartón en las que traen comida o diferentes cosas que llegan a la casa. Estas cajas las pueden utilizar para hacer cualquier actividad de entretenimiento. O también estas botellas, por ejemplo, son las botellas que no tiramos a la basura, pero en vez de tirarlas a la basura lo reciclan, las vamos a reusar. ¿Y cómo la vamos a reusar? Vamos a hacer actividades físicas fáciles y sencillas que cualquier niño las puede hacer. En este caso tomé estas botellas. Los niños serían felices solamente jugando y haciendo ejercicio. Bueno, como ya terminé mis ejercicios de cintureros antes de tirar estos a otro lugar o de guardarlos para mi próxima sesión de ejercicios voy a hacer otro cuastro juego. Ya que tengo estas cajas de plástico aquí con números, le pongo números al frente pero puedo colocar diferentes números alrededor para voltearlas después de que termine el juego. Entonces podemos hacer un juego de lanzamiento para ver si empezamos. Y así practicamos los números y hacemos puntos. ¿Qué tal? Muy bien, ahora voy a hacer el lanzamiento con las esferas o con las pelotas. Como ustedes pueden ver, estas son figuras de esfera. Tenemos varios tamaños aquí. Tenemos una que es bien grande, otra que es un poco más pequeña, otra que es un poco más pequeña y la más pequeña. Y podemos hacer actividades de lanzar y también ganar puntos y además vamos a practicar los números. Entonces estamos listos para lanzar. Vamos a lanzar la primera. A la una, a las dos, ya. Tan. ¡Wow! Ocho puntos. Vamos a lanzar la más grande. O, ayer, mientras más practiquemos esta actividad vamos a tener más amigos, vamos a estar practicando más con la familia y vamos a mejorar nuestra coordinación viso muscular. Una más. Miren eso. Muy bien. Ahora una más. Listo. Y luego repetimos y le damos turnos a los otros miembros de la familia y vamos con el papá, la mamá, toda la familia y listo. ¿Qué tal les parece? Espero que lo disfruten. Ya saben que siempre hay que estar seguro en la casa disfrutando y aprendiendo de las actividades que estamos compartiendo con ustedes. Hasta una próxima oportunidad. disfrutando y aprendiendo de las actividades que estamos compartiendo con ustedes. Hasta una próxima oportunidad.
...
I have a motion by trustee Toby Jackson. Do I have a second?
Evan's second.
Thank you. We have a second by trustee CJ Evans. I'll call on each trustee if there's any discussion. District two trustee Toby Jackson, any discussion?
No discussion. Thank you.
See Phillips.
No discussion.
Trustee Brookins.
No discussion.
Trustee Evans.
No discussion.
Trustee Dar.
No discussion.
Trustee Luébanos.
No discussion.
Trustee Paz.
No discussion.
And I'm Jacinto Ramos and I have no discussion. We're going to move the vote. I'll call you each trustee by name. If you would please say yes or no on accepting consent agenda items. Uh trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Phillips. Yes.
Trustee Brookins.
Yes.
Trustee Evan.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Trustee Luébanos.
Yes.
Trustee Paz.
Yes.
And I'm Jacinto Ramos Jr. And I vote yes. So the mash- the motion passes unanimously eight, four and zero against. We will move on to action items. We did not remove any from consent agenda. So we will move on to uh personnel. On staff attorney, executive director, special education. Do I have a motion?
So move Jackson.
We have a motion by trustee Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second, Anail.
Thank you. We have a second by trustee Luébanos. We'll call on each trustee in case we have any discussion. Trustee Jackson.
No discussion except thank you to staff. This is exciting.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips.
No discussion.
Trustee Brookins.
No discussion.
Trustee Evans.
No discussion.
Trustee Dar.
No discussion.
Trustee Luébanos.
No discussion.
Trustee Paz.
No discussion.
And I have no discussion as well. District one trustee. Uh we will move to voting. Please say yes, no, or abstain. Uh beginning with district two trustee trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Trustee Brookins.
Yes.
Trustee Evan.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Trustee Luébanos.
Yes.
Trustee Paz.
Yes.
And I'm trustee Ramos and I vote yes. The motion passes eight, four and zero against. Dr. Scribner, would you like to make some introductions?
Yes, thank you very much, President Ramos and the members of the board. Uh we are very pleased with your action on this item tonight. We have added two more valuable members to our team. Uh the first individual I'd like to introduce to you is um our new staff attorney and his name is Neil Bonavita. And if um we could offer him an opportunity to briefly address the board, Neil.
Uh good evening, members of the board, President Ramos, Dr. Scribner. I am pleased and grateful to be joining the staff at uh Fort Worth ISD and I'm looking forward to joining uh joining up with you guys and starting in September 1. So I'm looking forward to being there next Tuesday and I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you, Neil. We look forward to having you onboard um as we as we take our legal team to full capacity. Uh and also uh tonight we are adding to our team, the executive director of special education, uh Dr. Janice Carter. Uh Dr. Carter, would you like to please address the board briefly? I think you're on mute, Janice.
Let's see. Yes, I am. I think I'm off mute now.
Yes, you are.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Um um President Ramos and Dr. Scribner, members of the board. Good evening. I'm so honored to be here. Thank you for having me. I look forward to starting with Fort Worth ISD, less than a week away. Been a a long wait, but um so I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I can't wait to get to work. Um I've been waiting for this for almost um two months now. Um so I'm very excited. Um I am um definitely honored. I'm moving um in the process of doing my final moves from California um to Fort Worth. Um so I'll be back this weekend. I was there um from June through like three days ago. So I I can't wait. Thank you so much.
Welcome, welcome aboard, Janice. We're very, very excited and um that concludes our our reports, President Ramos. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. Welcome, Dr. Carter, and welcome, Mr. Bonavita. Glad to have you with Fort Worth ISD. Uh we will now move on to action agenda item A, which is discussion in action to approve district teaching permit for non-core CTE courses. Do I have a motion?
Ashley Paz, move.
Thank you. So we have a motion by trustee Paz. Do I have a second?
Trustee Dar.
Thank you. We have a second by trustee Dar. Uh we'll call on each of you just in case we have any discussion. Trustee Jackson.
No discussion.
Trustee Phillips.
No discussion.
Trustee Brookins.
No discussion.
Trustee Evans.
No discussion.
Trustee Dar.
No discussion.
Trustee Rob- uh I'm sorry, trustee Luébanos.
No discussion.
Trustee Paz.
No discussion.
And I have no discussion as well. So we'll move to voting. I'll call your names, trustees. Please say yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Trustee Brookins.
Yes.
Uh trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Trustee Luébanos.
Yes.
Trustee Paz.
Yes.
And I'm trustee Ramos and I vote yes. Motion passes eight, four and zero against. Passes unanimously going on to um 12B, which is discussion in action to approve contract renewals for educational technology, digital learning, Texas student data system, TSDS, public education inform- information management, PEIMS, and region 11 telecommunication network, RETN for 2020, 2021 school year. Do I have a motion?
So move Jackson.
Thank you. We have a motion by trustee Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second, Paz.
Thank you. We have a second by trustee Paz. Call on each trustee if we have any discussion. Trustee Jackson.
No discussion.
Trustee Phillips.
No discussion.
Trustee Brookins.
No discussion.
Trustee Evans.
Uh discussion.
Trustee Dar.
I will be abstaining from this vote because region 11 is my employer.
Thank you, trustee Dar. Uh trustee Luébanos.
No discussion.
Trustee Paz.
No discussion.
And I how I also don't have any discussion. My name is Jacinto Ramos Jr., trustee. Uh we will now call trustees for yes, no, or abstaining on the voting. Uh trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Trustee Brookins.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Luébanos.
Yes.
Trustee Paz.
Yes.
And I'm trustee Ramos and I vote yes. So the mash- the motion passes seven, four and one person abstaining. We will now go on to discussion in action to nominate and cast votes regarding Terrant appraisal district appointment selection. Have a motion.
I have a motion.
Trustee Luébanos. Who's your motion?
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Ramos. I have a motion. I move to extend the deadline to us for the task board of directors for an additional additional one week. The purpose of my motion is to ensure we have the biggest possible applicant pool possible. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Luébanos. Um do we have a second?
Second, Jackson.
Thank you. So we have a second by trustee Jackson on the motion to extend by seven days. Well, uh call on trustees for discussion. Uh trustee Jackson, any discussion?
No discussion.
Trustee Phillips.
No discussion.
Trustee Brookins.
No discussion.
Uh trustee Evans.
No discussion.
Trustee Dar.
No discussion.
Trustee Luébanos.
No discussion.
Trustee Paz.
No discussion.
Uh and my name and I'm trustee Ramos and I have no discussion. We'll move the vote. I'll call on each trustee. Please say yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Phillips.
No.
Uh trustee Brookins.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Um trustee Luébanos.
Yes.
Uh trustee Paz.
No.
Um and I am trustee Ramos and I will also vote no. Motion passes five, four and three against. We will move on to um 12D, which is discussion in action to approve endorsement of candidate for Texas Association of School Boards, Board of Directors, Region 11, position C. Um if I may, as uh uh one as one of the Tasby representatives, I'd like to make a motion uh for Arlington ISD, Justin Chapa. To to endorse him for the Texas Association of School Boards, Board of Directors, Region 11, position C. Do we have a second?
Second, Jackson.
Thank you. We have a second by trustee Jackson. Uh we'll call on each trustee for any discussion. Resty Jackson.
No discussion.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips.
No discussion.
Trustee Brookins.
No discussion.
Trustee Evans.
No discussion.
Trustee Dar.
No discussion.
Trustee Luébanos.
No discussion.
Trustee Paz.
No discussion.
And I'm trustee Ramos and I have no discussion. Will please move the vote as I call your names, trustees. Please say yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Trustee Brookins.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Uh trustee Luébanos.
Yes.
Trustee Paz.
Yes.
And I'm trustee Ramos and I vote yes. So the motion passes eight, four and zero against. We've come towards the end of the meeting, my friends. We're comments by board members or superintendent on current district activities and announcements. Uh we'll call on each trustee just in case you have any announcements. We'll begin with trustee Toby Jackson.
Uh thank you, President Ramos. I want to thank the Eastern Hills Pyramid. Uh uh I want to thank Dr. Sherry Washington as well as Deborah Trailer. Uh there is some wonderful unity and of course the the schools within the Eastern Hills Pyramid are not only in uh the second district where I represent, but also in trustee Phillips district. And together they were all out knocking on doors and visiting with individuals and increasing uh the knowledge of everyone in the community that school will begin. And it's amazing what they learned. Many people think if they haven't signed up uh to attend virtual school that they don't start on our start date. So that was one thing that they learned, but the big thing that they learned was where their kids live, who their families are. And the big thing that the kids and the families learned was that Fort Worth ISD cares and especially in the Eastern Hills Pyramid. So I want to send a special thanks out to each one of those individuals that gave of their time. And I also want to thank them for giving of their heart. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Jackson. Next up, trustee Phillips. Any comments?
Comments, sir.
Thank you, trustee Brookins.
I just want to thank Dr. Scribner and his team for putting together the presentation that we had earlier today. Um after seeing that, I understand a lot more of the processes of what we're doing as far as uh districting and how we're uh util- utilizing everything we can to help our students in our district. And also wanted to ask that um we get a copy of the um the door hangers that are going out for those of us who can't walk through all the neighborhoods. I'd like to see if we can um get that put in our neighborhood newsletters about registration.
Thank you, trustee Brookins. Uh trustee Evans.
Um I just want to give a shout out to South High Mount Elementary and their PTA um on their new outdoor classroom. Last semester, one of the first grade teachers identified a need uh that would not just benefit her classroom, but it'd benefit all the students on campus. She went to the PTA and they started working their magic, getting input from everybody and applying for grants. And they were awarded a grant this summer. And when the South High Mount students come back uh in October, they're going to have a brand new outdoor classroom and the whole school's going to benefit from it. And I just want to say thank you to the PTA and the staff at South High Mount uh for the great job in getting that done.
Thank you, trustee Evans. Trustee Dar.
Thank you, President Ramos. Um just a quick shout out to um the schools who serve the constituents in district six. I follow you all on Facebook and there is a constant steady stream of good news and um great things that are happening on your campuses. And also um a tribute to the teachers and the hard work that they're doing and the administrators and the hard work that they're doing. This is a full team effort. This is administration. This is teachers. This is paraprofessionals. This is staff and and everybody else is on board and working hard. And I just want you to know that I I enjoy that's the bright spot of my um time on social media is seeing some of the great stuff that's going on in these schools. So thank you very much. And and the PTAs too that are working hard to make sure that things are in place for kids when they return to school virtually and then when they return to school in person. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, trustee Dar. Next up, trustee Luébanos.
Uh thank you, President Ramos. I would like to second and our comments. And then I would like to thank all the schools, middle schools and and high schools that are doing these meetings uh for virtual learning, also in Spanish. By the way, uh a lot more audience has been wish about how to do online classes. So thank you to all the schools who are doing that. And I know some of them have a schedule this week and next week to do uh those online videos. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Luébanos. Trustee Paz.
No comment.
Dr. Scribner.
It's been a long night. Want to thank this board for your commitment and thank our team um for their service and look forward to getting after it tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. And I don't have any comments either. So at this time, uh the time is 8:51 PM and this meeting is adjourned. Everyone stay safe.